All right, welcome. Is my mic on? My mic is on.
Gavel.
Oh. Okay, I don't want to use the gavel, but... I don't like using the gavel, but... Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you and welcome back. It's really good to have everyone here in person. It is 3:04 PM. I'm Joy Hollingsworth. I'm the Chair of the Select Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Kettle. Council President Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Rink.
Present.
Councilmember Dibeta. Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon.
Here.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
I'm here.
Seven present.
Awesome, thank you so much. Welcome to set... And for... Can you repeat how many present? I'm sorry.
Seven.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And welcome to Session Two of this public hearing of both the one Comprehensive Plan and the permanent House Bill 1110 legislation. This public hearing is specifically for us to hear from you, the community, feedback on amendments we as councilmembers have generated since the last public hearing. This is our last public hearing before we go into a vote next week. And that is... I know you all are very sad about that, but... And that was a joke, but maybe you all... I don't know. But we would... We love the public hearings because we get to hear your feedback in real time. And you all took your time down to come today. We look forward to hearing from your reactions to our specific amendments and also continue to hear about your broader visions about how you want Seattle to feel and what your neighborhoods are looking for. This morning, we had a presentation from Central staff, so thanking Central staff about the voting process for next week. I highly recommend that you watch the recording from this morning session so you can understand about the next process and what that looks like. And I will talk about that as well. But there was a memo that's online that just talks about the meetings that we will have next week and the timeline for that. Today's public hearing has been broken into two sessions. This is Session Two. Registration started at 2:30. I know everyone... People lined up before that and just really appreciate you all coming down, taking off work, all that good stuff, to come down and register. Registration will remain open until 6:30. So there is going to be a large window for people to be able to come down and continue to sign up. The next thing, a couple things for tonight. Everyone will get one minute. I know, first of all, I know that's not a lot of time, but we have to get through everyone because there's going to be more people that come through. And we want to make sure that we can listen to everyone and their comment. I am going to just humbly ask that we remain respectful to each other tonight. And what does that mean if people don't know? I ask that you all don't interrupt each other. There's going to be some people that are going to have difference of opinions. So please don't boo or interrupt someone while they're talking just because they have a different of opinion. I know that we can all be respectful today because that's because we are Seattleites. The next thing, before we also get started, when you give your public comment, please state your name and which bill that you are addressing before you deliver your remarks. It helps us follow along which amendments that you're talking about as we are going through this public hearing. Are there any questions from my colleagues before we get started? I was going to ask you all if you had any questions, but hopefully I answered them. And the Clerk, will you please read the instructions for the public hearing?
The public hearing period will be moderated in the following manner. The in-person public commenters will be called upon in the order registered. If you have not registered to speak, we would like to. You can sign up on the sign-up sheet outside chambers and downstairs in BKL specifically prior to 6:30 PM. Registration will close at 6:30 PM. Numbers will be called in groups of 10 at one time. Please line up in numerical order. There are two microphone podiums, the one straight ahead of me and then right here on the far west side. You can sign up... You can actually speak on either microphone. Please adjust the mics when you approach the microphones. Make sure they're really close to you so we can hear you speak when it's your turn to speak. Begin your comments by stating your name as well as which bills you may be referring to. And the speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of your allotted time. If your speakers... If the speakers do not end their time by the end of the 10... By the time the allotted time has ended, we will mute you so we can get on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. So we'll call everyone in groups of 10. It's going to be... Were people given numbers? They were. Okay, awesome. Everyone has numbers. Okay. Because I can read some of your handwriting. It's a little challenging if you did in cursive, but... So numbers 1 through 10, that's Cecilia Black, Thomas, Bob Morgan, Carlo, Jeff, Cindy, Leonard, Sylvia, Anthony, and Rachel. 1 through 10. And we have two mics that you can jump into. Both mics are phenomenal and sound good. Hi, Cecilia, welcome. You're going to kick us off, which I know is going to be great, so... And when you're ready... Hold on, we're going to get the clock started. Give us one moment. We'll get it up on the screen. And then, so numbers 1 through 10 are up. Cecilia, welcome. Kick us off.
My name's Cecilia Black, and I'm a community organizer at Disability Rights Washington. And I just want to say that there are so many amendments here that I'm genuinely very excited about. So I'm just going to start with amendments that I hope you'll support. And most importantly, please support Councilmember Rink's Amendment 34 to expand neighborhood centers. Support Councilmember Kettle's Amendment 61 to extend affordable housing bonuses to social housing. Support Councilmember Hollingsworth Amendment 79 for accessibility bonuses and all of the amendments that allow for corner stores throughout our city and our neighborhoods and all the amendments that make it stacked flats more economically viable. And then lastly, amendments that will remove costly parking minimums. And as you're going through this comp plan, I really hope that you ask yourself what you would do if you were suddenly disabled tomorrow and you couldn't drive and you couldn't walk upstairs to your house and think about where you would go. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Thomas followed by Bob Morgan. Hi, Thomas.
Hi. My name is Tom Bernard. I am the Board Chair for the Seattle Social Housing PDA. And I'm here to speak in favor of any amendment that provides density, but in particular Amendments 17 and 61. We are building out a very new alternative to the traditional affordable housing sector. And we are really feeling that we can provide an opportunity that is not available to middle-income people, to teachers, to firemen, to policemen, to a number of people. And we are... You know, this is the most important legislation that you're probably going to see outside of the budget. And we really hope that wherever you end up, you end up with the largest density and opportunities for social housing and affordable housing in general for this city. And so I'd like to tend to my thanks to Councilmembers Rink and Councilmember Kettle for those two amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas. Bob? And you have your name tag.
Bob Morgan, I'm addressing the Comprehensive Plan. I live in the West Green Lake area and prefer the West Green Lake Neighborhood Center boundary that is proposed by Councilmember Strauss over the one proposed by the mayor. But I'd like to focus on amendments which are of the greatest concern to me. And they would remove parking requirements citywide. They would add eight previously unannounced neighborhood centers that allow restaurants in all neighborhood residential zones. And they'd amend the definition of major transit service to include frequent transit service areas. These invite a CEPA challenge as they exceed the impacts considered in the EIS. Amendment 76 is illustrative. Here, development provisions for major transit areas would now apply to frequent transit areas that extend to almost the entire city of Seattle. Also, if the city defines major transit stop to include frequent transit stops, this would subject nearly the entire city to five- and six-story development densities called for under the state law. Exercise some moderation. Don't be the City Council known for denuding all of Seattle's neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Carlo. Hi, Carlo. Jazz hands. Hi, Carlo.
Hi.
You're not jazz hands. I was just saying. Yeah, no, you're good. Go ahead, Carlo.
Sorry. My name is Carlo. I live in the North End. I'm not going to be able to rattle off all the amendments that I think you should support. There's too many. So I'm just going to ask you support amendments that add back the neighborhood centers, the eight that were proposed, expand stacked flats, the amendments that allow neighborhood commercial marts, stores, whatever you want to call them, not just on corners, and ending parking mandates that incentivize paving asphalt over our trees. I'm tired of my family, my friends, my community being torn apart and priced out. I'm tired of parking lots being paved in my neighborhood and destroying the trees that were there and the yards and the green space and any arbitrary parking requirements for these new homes that are being built. The city's performed so much outreach already on this, and the data overwhelmingly shows we want more housing and we want to remove the restrictions to allow us to build. So please support these amendments and enable our...
Thank you, Carlo. And let the record reflect. We're joined online by Councilmember Juarez. Jeff, you are up.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jeff Callahan, and I'm not here really to talk about the amendments, although there's plenty that I have opinions about. But more of about... Oh, hello, hello. Just... But more about my own experience, my family's experience. I'd like you to think of the biggest, grandest tree you've seen in Seattle. That kind of tree was cut down next to my family house several months ago. It was known as the log cabin tree, a red cedar with a 64-inch diameter, eight trunks, easily a Tier 2 tree. Had we known, we would have tried to make it a Tier 1 protected tree. There are sides here that are today for trees and for developers and housing, but I'm a different side. I'm here, a third side here, for neighborhoods that truly need safeguards. We had none. We had virtually none. We were never given a chance to contest the coverage on this tree. The tree was on our side, and it was cut down without our permission. We have an Arborist report. We have the Assistant City...
Thank you, Jeff. You can send in your comments to us as well or you can throw them in that box. You're all good. Cindy, you're up next, followed by Leonard, and then Sylvia.
I'm here about Amendments 33 and 34. So I don't know if the councilmembers have actually walked through neighborhoods where some of these changes have been made. Have you spoken to residents where five- or six-story apartment buildings, condos have been built? These amendments will fundamentally change the neighborhoods, especially for people who want to stay in their homes. There will be eliminated green space. Mature trees will be gone. Natural daylight will be reduced in these neighborhoods, and the character of the neighborhoods will change. And the amendments directly contradict the city's own commitment to preservation. On the Department of Neighborhoods website, it talks about Ballard as being a historical site. And on that website, it says that it acknowledges that rapid development threatens the character and feeling of the neighborhood. It also destroys the family feeling of neighborhoods. We have children and families riding bikes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I don't mean to cut you off, but you can send in your comments as well. Thank you so much. We have Leonard. So number seven, eight, nine, and 10, Leonard, Sylvia, Anthony, and Rachel. You can pull it up. There we go.
Wonderful. Hi, my name's Leonard Harrison-Drome. I'm a renter in District 3 now. And I'm also speaking on behalf of my parents, who are homeowners in District 5 and couldn't make it here today. Both were raised in the South, but they came to Seattle to become medical lab scientists and biologists. When they came here, there was enough housing to accommodate them. And they were able to make a better life for their children. They also... They're getting older. And they want to maintain their independence, their mobility independence and getting basic necessities. Right now, they're more than 30 minutes away from the nearest grocery store. This is not acceptable. This is why I implore you to support Amendment 66, lifting the neighborhood business ban that is in place in 70% of Seattle. Lifting the ban on just corners is not enough. It's time to let Seattle cook, brew, and create. Support Amendment 66. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Number seven... Excuse me, number eight, Sylvia, followed by number nine, Anthony, and then Rachel.
Okay. Project Amendment 34, designating a neighborhood center in Loyal Heights. This proposal was added last minute and virtually no public notice. Neighborhood centers are stated or slated for buildings up to six stories. In Loyal Heights, that could mean over 100 tall apartment buildings and thousands of new residents, a possible 10x population increase. The state already upzoned to allow four to six homes per lot. Why add huge buildings that destroy neighborhood character and displace people and businesses when the One Seattle Plan satisfies housing requirements for the next 20 years? Our water system has already had failures. Can our water and sewer system handle hundreds of large new buildings? Also, we have only two east-west arterials and one north-south. Cars back up for blocks during rush hour on 85th Street now. We will never see light rail. Loyal Heights Elementary is near capacity. Where will all of the students go? This is a poorly planned backdoor proposal. Loyal Heights is not the place for Uber density. Please vote no on Amendment 34.
All right, next we have... Please, hold on. I'm going to kindly ask for you just to use jazz hands, no matter which way you're going for a comment, please. I know jazz hands are kind of silly, but just wave your... You can do the hey, ho, whatever. All right. Anthony and then Rachel. Thank you.
Anthony Salazar, speaking on Number 34. To the members of this City Council body and to those whose communities who would be affected, say no to Seattle City Council Amendment 34. Say no to the city overreach of our community's character that would destroy the very charm that attracted us to our respective neighborhoods. Say no to this lack of transparency and improper public review. Say no to this ill-conceived and shortsighted process that speaks nothing to the massive infrastructure that it would take to commiserate the number of new residents versus increased needs for water, sewage, and traffic. Say no to those who have ramrodded this blindsided and misguided notion that will result in our neighborhoods being significantly impacted by upzone high-density monstrosities. And to this body, I say not here, not now. Thank you.
All right, Number 10, Rachel. And then on... Before you start, Rachel, I'm sorry. 11 through 20, if you can start getting on deck, 11 through 20, you are next. Rachel, go right ahead.
My name is Rachel Nathanson. The One Seattle Plan has real outcomes and absolute consequences. This vision will show up on our streets and will forever be our day-to-day world. Many of the people advocating for a tree canopy in Seattle have been unfairly labeled NIMBYs. But we want a Seattle that when all the houses are built, the density is here, and we have more housing for the needs of our city, we also still have a tree canopy that provides good environmental stewardship. What we want is the vision that preserves Seattle's name, the Emerald City. This photo shows what could result on every block as far as the eye can see: no trees, little vegetation. And unless amended, the plan allows 95% lot coverage like this open space right here behind the building because this is permeable paving. I ask you to think about the legacy you each choose to leave behind. When walking down the streets of Seattle, which hopefully will be filled with far more housing, what do you want it to look like, feel like, and be like to live in? Thank you.
Now, we're at Number 11 through 20. 11 through 20.
Sorry. I'm June Blue Spruce. I live in southeast Seattle. As a mother and grandmother, I see housing and trees as interdependent. Here's an analogy. Think about what it takes to raise a child. Pregnancy and birth are huge events, but they're only the beginning. A child has to be nurtured to stay healthy. In the same way, getting a family into housing they can afford is just the beginning. They will live there for years, and the neighborhood has to support their health. That's where trees come in. Tree canopy provides shade, clean air, and health and stormwater benefits that parks and street trees can't replace. I'm sorry about my voice. Please pass Amendments 93 and 102 so housing and neighborhoods remain healthy for all. To ensure that equity and environmental justice are truly embedded in the One Seattle Plan, I also urge you to support Amendments 18, 19, 20, 28, 31, 76, 81, and 110. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert. Please.
Hi, y'all. Thanks for being here. Thank you all for being here. You guys, this is what we have. In a lot of neighborhoods in Seattle, this is what we have. This is on every street. Can I have that upside down? This is every street. This is what they're giving us. This is what they're going to give us. This is what your code and Office of Planning and Community Development is writing code to do this. Six units, 85% lot coverage. I love a lot of your amendments. You guys, none of them go halfway. If you really wanted the social housing developer to succeed, require that the prime contractor... You really want family housing? Require it. You really want trees? Require them. That's it.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we have Martha, and then Val, so 13 and 14.
Hello, everyone. My name is Martha Brown, and I'm here to encourage you to vote yes on Amendments 90 and 102. Well, here we are back to the age-old question about tree preservation and density and affordable housing. We need to have all of them together, and we are not on the right path so far. Amendment 90, we need to incentivize developers to preserve our large mature trees, especially our big conifers. We should not be allowing them to pave up to 95% of the lots. For Amendment 102, we need to close the loopholes in the current tree ordinance. We're losing our giant conifers at an alarming rate. We need to regroup and find a better path forward that will retain our biggest, most valuable trees, provide affordable housing and density. All of it can be done. We just need to figure out a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. 14, Val, followed by Eric, Number 15.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'll be speaking on behalf of Eric, Number 14, and Val, Number 15. Hi, I'm Val Nahara. I'm here to speak in support of Amendments 93 and 102. I currently rent a townhouse in Columbia City that was recently built in 2022, but I do not always live in a beautiful townhouse like the one I live in now. I actually grew up in Yezzer Terrace, so low-income housing where trees were few and far between. Growing up in such an environment often felt very isolating. And having a sense of belonging in Seattle was not always easy. Fast forward to today. My career path has allowed me to have more living possibilities. And that is how I came to live next to a tree that I call Albert. Albert is a majestic, 80-feet-tall western red cedar tree that grows in the corner of the lot of the five townhouses where I currently rent. During the hot summers, Albert has contributed to a 50% reduction in my electricity costs by providing consistent shade. Most importantly, last year, when I experienced a severe flare-up for my chronic condition and couldn't go for walks because of vertigo, I used what little energy I had left to feel the ground below Albert's canopy the ground below Albert's canopy and ask him for strength so I could keep fighting to get healthy. This street brought me peace and healing during one of the darkest times in my life, and I would not be standing here if it weren't for him. I believe I can still take some of his time. I've seen the city evolve over the years, and I care deeply about its future. It pains me to see the loss of trees, particularly in southeast Seattle.
We have to reset the clock, so just give us one second, because you are now Eric. This is Eric, okay. So Val has morphed into Eric. That's okay. Wait, wait, let us restart the clock. So now this is Eric, number 15. I got you.
Thank you, council members.
You're good, you're good.
This is your first time coming here, so thanks. I've seen the city evolve over the years, and I care deeply about its future. It pains me to see the loss of trees, particularly in southeast Seattle, where communities already face inequities in health and environmental access. I am grateful to the old tree code that preserved Albert, because for the first time in my life, in Eric's, we know exactly where we belong. We belong here in Seattle. And I would love for the next low-income kid growing up in Seattle to have the same feeling, and to know that everybody here today cares about them and sees them and values them. So from the bottom of our hearts, we kindly urge you to support Amendment 93 and 102.
Thank you, Val and Eric. Yes, you belong here. Okay, thank you. We all do. Number 16, Alexandra, number 16, hey.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Alexandra, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Duamish River Community Coalition. You might have seen my email in your inbox on Wednesday. Our priorities for the comp plan are simple: Keep our families in the Duamish Valley by supporting deeply affordable housing, including multi-bedroom units and social housing; Invest in our neighborhood's infrastructure and health by funding missing sidewalks, safer streets, clean air and noise protections, and access to grocery stores; Grow equitably by mixing urban greening with gentle density and protecting legacy homeowners so they can stay and thrive as our community grows; We urge you to vote yes on amendments that expand affordable housing bonuses; Name the Duamish Valley as a priority for a low-pollution neighborhood; Require indoor air quality improvements near highways and in homes; And give homeowners more flexibility to add ADUs and stay in place. At the same time, we urge you to vote no on amendments that would weaken environmental review and add vague public safety elements that could increase overpolicing in communities of color. Seattle has an opportunity to lead with that.
Thank you, Alexandra. Next, we have Colleen, followed by number 18, Rata.
Good afternoon, council, and thank you. I represent Lower Hurst Community Council, and that's over 5,000 residents in northeast Seattle. We support many of the amendments, particularly 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41. Those are minor adjustments for neighborhood centers. We also support amendments to add livability. Number 81, historic retention with character cladding. Trees, we support 92, 93, 97, 102, 103. We also support mailing to residences with an upzone. We strongly oppose some other amendments. One of them is number 76, changing frequent transit to be bus stops within a half a mile. That's completely opposite of HB 1110, which is a quarter-mile of fixed rail and guided systems. That is not, that should not be allowed. It's introduced late. Number 87 and 84, lifting all the parking regulations, again, outside the scope of HB 1110, which is just supposed to be for residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have number 18, 19, and 20.
This starts when I start talking, right? It's a minute, it's not a lot. Y'all are the leaders of this. Sorry.
No, no, you won't start yet. Go ahead.
All right, all right.
Good. We'll give you your 10-second warm-up. You're good.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I need a warm-up sometimes. I sometimes run out of steam. Hi, my name is Rata. I live and I work in the International District. Y'all are the leaders of this fair city. Y'all understand that. This goes all the way back to Arthur Denny and Doc Maynard, right? The divide between North and South. Y'all understand that this comp plan as it is, it follows and just is an overlay of the racist, redlining districts that shaped the city to what it is right now. Look, we're not looking for an advantage, we're just looking for fairness. You can't add density into an already-dense neighborhoods, right? Like ours. You can't just put all of that, right? You have to open up, and the North End has to understand it needs to open up more place. You have to go beyond what the comp plan is right now and open up more space. They're acting like we don't have the same problems they have, right? We have grandmas who want to sit underneath trees. We have kids, we have families who grow up in nice neighborhoods also, but it's unfair, it's racist, right? And we need leadership like yours who are willing to say, like, "We mandate that."
Thank you, Rata. Next, we have 19, Jennifer, and then Paul, number 20, and then we'll do 21 through 30 next.
So this plan, the comp plan, did not ever assess the environmental impacts on endangered species like our 73 critically endangered southern resident orcas and their babies. And it claims that due to past colonization damage, maintaining endangered animal populations is not feasible. I emailed council, the legal appeal filed September 10th in the Court of Appeals against this EIS. Why is Seattle moving forward without addressing the EIS that is so bad it basically never happened? This flies in the face of science and human rights. The mayor more than doubled the housing units after the EIS was written, rendering it useless. We need clean water, and we need the basic human right for the public to stand up for their environment. Seattle is threatening this right. Affordable housing, like stacked flats, shared walls, lower prices, while simultaneously protecting our water-filtering trees. Please choose science. I also would support Amendment 93 and 102, and ask how many more babies need to die? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, number 20, before we do number 20, if 21 through 30 could get ready on deck, you are next, 21 through 30. Hold on, Paul, you're all good. I don't want them to, while they're getting up, mess up your thing. All right, we got all the noise out the way. Go ahead, Paul.
Hello, my name is Paul, and I'm with the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance, Seattle Chapter. Two years ago, we partnered with OPCD and SDOT to survey our members and partners who live and work in Seattle to learn about their experience in both housing and transportation in Seattle so that we can have a policy recommendation for the comprehensive plan. We found that a number of people have been displaced from the high cost of living in the city, and one of the reasons for that is that there is not enough affordable housing, especially because of the existing zoning law. The comp plan doesn't address the percent targets for affordable housing in high-displaced risk area and even low-density neighborhoods. BIPOC workers, especially those living in South Seattle and the CID, have been heavily affected. If you really want to build affordable housing, then let's have more community ownership and community-led development in the comp plan. I just want to remind that I hope that partnership was not just for a show, and the city really intend to amplify the voices of working people. I do hope that you listen to those recommendations and incorporate it in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let the record reflect, we're also, we've been, I just, I apologize, I forgot to acknowledge, but we are joined by Councilmember Rivera online, so thank you. Numbers 21 through 30, hi, John.
Hi, I'm John from Fremont. I think it's important to remember that trees and density are not mutually exclusive. They can both exist. Each tree generates over $200,000 of value, generating oxygen, providing soil fertility and erosion control, absorbing and purifying 750 gallons of stormwater, removing 60 pounds of pollution from the air. A single tree in a single year cools like 10 AC units running continuously in this growing urban heat island. Trees are also proven to reduce crime. So please vote yes on Amendments 77, 93, and 102. Vote no on Amendment 72. What's more important, short-term gains for private capital or protecting a healthy, livable city for our children? Again, trees and density are not mutually exclusive. If we do not sustain trees, we will soon live in a world that cannot sustain people. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Martha, and then Kathy.
All right, I want to thank all of you who get the environmental and public health logic behind protecting urban trees on site when building new housing. Sadly, the comp plan, the 2023 Tree Code, and construction rules pit them against one another, paving the way, literally, for clearing sites not for affordable housing but for mega mansions. Again and again, trees on the periphery of a lot, begging for their lives from the sidelines, are cut down. Their power to filter polluted air and absorb carbon gone forever, with developers saying they can't build new housing and protect trees. Chew gum and walk at the same time? The following two amendments would help turn things around. Amendment 93 creates a minimum planting area per tree, ensuring there's open soil instead of 95% hardscape, while Amendment 102 restores DCI's authority to request alternate site plans that incorporate trees and closes loopholes that allow complete tree removal. Please revise it to also include Tier 3 trees. Other amendments to protect large trees are appreciated, but Amendments 93 and 102 cover the bases. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy, number 23, followed by 24.
My name is Kathy Kirkoff, and I want you to vote yes on both Amendment 93 and 102. We were promised at the time of the passing of the 2023 Tree Ordinance that the flaws in the ordinance would be fixed. Fulfill that promise and vote yes on Amendment 102. It will fix three glaring loopholes and return the SDCI the authority they previously had to request alternate site plans to incorporate trees into their projects. Amendment 93 guarantees green space on newly-developed lots. Without it, lots could be hardscaped up to 95%, which would worsen heat zones and their attendant deadly health and environmental impacts. Give future generations the ability to survive what's coming. I also support Amendment 89. As a retired physical therapist, the body-
Thank you, Kathy. Derek, number 24, followed by 25, Deb.
Hello, council members. My name is Derek, and I work at Interim CDA. We are a community organization rooted in Chinatown International District promoting equity of immigrant and refugee people. We are sending comments already with several community partners in coalition with each other across displacement communities. We have consistently asked, "How can the comp plan fight displacement? How can promote racial equity?" And we are hard to find that many organizations agree with us about the importance of these things. However, this comp plan does not position us to have enough housing or affordable homes nor community-oriented solutions for our problems. We need both to prevent displacement, and this comp plan does not allow us to exemplify racial equity. However, I'd like to raise up amendments that promote multigenerational family-sized homes. I would raise up amendments that preference more affordable homes and amendments that increase density in low-displacement places. We need leadership now more than ever to help us fight displacement across our communities. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Derek. Next, we have Deb, number 25, and then number 26.
Hi, I'm Deb Lester, and I live in Maple Leaf within the proposed neighborhood center. I'm one of the 1,734 people who've signed the petition opposing the neighborhood center due to lack of infrastructure, services, and the severe impact it would have on tree canopy due to lack of right-of-way to support street trees. Prior to former Councilmember Moore's departure, she worked to address our concerns and proposed boundary changes. However, since Councilmember Moore's departure, Councilmember Juarez has been silent on this issue, and we've been unable to meet with her. We contacted Chair Hollingsworth, and were told we needed to work with Councilmember Juarez. Despite boundary amendments to the majority of the other proposed neighborhood centers, no amendments to the Maple Leaf Neighborhood Center were proposed. As a result, Maple Leaf has been unrepresented in this latest process. Please honor Councilmember Moore's work with the community and amend the Neighborhood Center boundaries to protect trees, which were critical to Maple Leaf due to lack of stormwater infrastructure and for our quality of life. Please listen to the people who live here. Thank you. Also, support 93 and 102. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next, we have number 26.
Hi, I'm Sandy Hunt, and I'm speaking in favor of amendments to the comp plan, number 93, 102, and two adding Tier 3 trees to number 102. And I've lived in Beacon Hill about 25 years. I also lived in North Seattle 20 years, so I really do understand, like, there's this dichotomy sometimes in the city, and I think we need to really put together a comp plan that builds up the South End, both with the environmental impact that we have from airports. It's really important to have mature trees in that area, maintaining the health of people as we increase density, while also increasing the density of people who live in the neighborhoods in the North End, but keeping the trees there so that doesn't turn into what we have in the South End. The South End really needs those mature trees to protect from the air pollutants. Public health studies have shown that the ultra and ultraviolet particles from aircraft landing over our heads, you know, decreases our lifespans by five years.
Thank you, Sandy. 27, 28, 29, 30. When you're ready, you're good.
I'm ready. Hello, Nancy Lichter from Maple Leaf. And our Maple Leaf community supports thoughtful, appropriate density that produces affordable housing that's needed for, you know, those that really do need that, but at the same time protecting valuable tree canopy and green space. I don't have a specific amendment for Maple Leaf, but I would ask you to support 93 and 102. However, I, along with 1,734 petition signers, are against the current comp plan for our neighborhood because it is going beyond HB 1110's intent, and it's giving developers the green light to just mow down the trees and build structures that will essentially fill the lot and eliminate existing tree canopy. I'm asking, and we ask that you amend the boundaries for the Maple Leaf Neighborhood Center to limit the impact to the trees' safety, traffic, and the 12th Avenue Greenway. Five-story buildings and above should be limited to Roosevelt Way and not-
Thank you, Nancy. We have Matt, followed by Abby, Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Matt. I live on Capitol Hill, but I do not know how much longer, because a few days ago I came home to find this rent increase attacked the door of my home. Now, I want to stay in my home. I've lived here for over a decade. I was able to start a small business here, create jobs in my community, hire people in my community, and get them paid. But now I am searching for a new place to live, and that search does not include Seattle, because like me, a lot of people love this city, and there aren't enough places for us to live. I think the best element of Seattle's neighborhood character is our ability to welcome new neighbors, especially at a time when a lot of people are fleeing less hospitable parts of the country. And I think for us to live up to our values, we need more homes. We need more homes in every neighborhood. We need more homes on every street. And I'm glad that we're having meetings about housing. I'm glad that we're working on plans about housing, but at the end of the day, we can't live in a meeting, and we can't pay our rent with a party. So I hope at some point you can get out of the way and let people start building homes. So thanks for your time, and I hope Seattle is still my home by the time this process concludes. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have Abby, 29, and Stephanie, number 30.
Hi, I'm Abby. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done. I want to have you support 93 and 102. Please keep the Tier Trees in 102, and also no on 106. But I just want to say that open up the North End. We need housing. My daughter will never be able to afford a house in Seattle, and we need affordable housing. And what's happening right now is we have some developers taking advantage of Seattle and clear-cutting lots and building up three massive, expensive houses that none of us are able to afford. So I'm asking for you to be creative and think of intelligent design, preserve the mature trees that we have. We don't have very many left. I'll say Ballard Commons has some trees. They don't get watered very often, and when you try to go there to sit under a tree, it's so pathetic. We need to have trees that provide shade so we can have a lively, livable city with housing.
Thank you, Abby. Next, we have Stephanie. Stephanie, you're number 30, and then I'm going to ask numbers 31 through 40 to rise, my friends, and you are next. Y'all are a tough crowd. Usually, people would have laughed at that, to rise. Okay, you laughed at that part. All right, rise, my friends. But hold on, don't go yet, Stephanie, while all the noise.
Yeah, you let me know.
Okay, so we're, Stephanie's number 30, and we're asking 31 through 40 to rise. All right, awesome. Stephanie, Mike is yours.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm a homeowner in District 3, or District Councilperson Hollingsworth, and my neighborhood is being upzoned. There's never been any meaningful challenge to that. We gladly accept the upzoning from the city, and I'm just here to ask that, with all due respect to my neighbors in Maple Leaf and Ballard and everywhere else, we get a disproportionate, if we're going to absorb a disproportionate amount of the density, we get a disproportionate amount of the resources and attention that are required to make sure that our city stays livable, that it's walkable, that it's bikeable, that it's not just a hub-and-spoke mode of model of transit passing through our neighborhoods to get to downtown, but instead that we keep investing in making the stream really real and making the support that we have for the density in our city, Seattle is a city worthwhile, so that in the next generation, it's an incredible place to live still.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we have Ryan, number 31 through 40. Hi, Ryan.
Hello. Afternoon, council members. My name's Ryan Driscoll. I'm the chair of the 43rd LD Dems, which includes Districts 3, 4, 6, and 7, and represents some of the densest neighborhoods in our city. I stand here representing our members, who are in strong support of a bold, comprehensive plan that increases density across our entire city. We're strong supporters of social housing and support Amendments 17 and 61 that'll make it more feasible. We're strong supporters of more neighborhood centers across the city and expanding neighborhood centers, including Amendments 34, 42, 43, 46, 47, 48, 49, and 36. We're strong supporters of walkable neighborhoods where families can move without needing a car, access fresh food and education, and afford to remain there over the lifetimes of their families, including Amendments 78, 66, 60, 63, and 89. And finally, we're strong supporters of finding the balance between an urban canopy of trees and density for housing, including removing parking requirements like Amendments 7, 8, 84, and 86, and Amendment 91. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we have 32. Hi, Ben.
Hi, my name's Ben Warden. I was a field organizer on Initiative 135 and for the signature gathering on Initiative 137 that turned into Prop 1A to fund our social housing developer. I'm really passionate about seeing that work that we did grassroots to get a social housing developer here in Seattle actually included and carried through in our comprehensive plans. When we're thinking about how are we building out our city for the next 10 years, let's make sure that we remember to include it, to center it, to set us up for success in building permanently affordable public housing through our social housing developer. And with regards to that, please, please support Amendments Number 17 and 61, with particular regards to the social housing developer. Please support increased density throughout the city through Amendment 34, and support Amendments 66 and 78 towards being able to build walkable community neighborhoods where people can get to stores and shops and schools, because we make space for family-sized housing bonuses, we make space for there to be mixed commercial-
Thank you, Ben. I don't mean-
Sorry, the last amendment I used to support is Amendment 84. Please involve tree park.
Thank you, Ben. We have 33, followed by 34.
Hi, my name's Robert Crookshank. I'm a gray-haired homeowner with six tall fir trees near my backyard, near Maple Leaf, and please don't shrink that Maple Leaf Neighborhood Center, by the way. I'm here to urge you to do the maximum amount possible to build more density everywhere in our city. It's essential for affordability. I want my kids to be able to live here as adults, rather than have them have to move 50 miles outside of Dallas to afford homes. I also care about trees. I've been a volunteer leader with the Sierra Club, and my first job out of college was working at Save the Redwoods. That's why I'm urging you to vote yes on Councilmember Rink's Amendment 34. It's the most effective amendment to protect trees. If you make it hard to build new density, you aren't protecting trees. We're condemning them to die from heat and drought. Studies make it clear the largest threat facing Seattle's urban forest isn't development, it's actually the climate crisis. Most of the trees that die in Seattle die on public land and in our parks. That's a result of the sprawl. Protecting our urban forest means building more apartment buildings in all of our neighborhoods. We have to reduce tension and conflict between trees, make it easier to build in more places. We protect more trees and build more homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. You said Robert with gray hair. That's what you said, Robert, right? Okay, awesome. I don't want to offend you, but you said it, Robert with gray hair. Okay, Jeff, you are up, followed by Sandy.
Hi, yes, my name is Jeff Paul. I'm an organizer with How's Our Neighbors. I have a little bit of gray hair, not as much as Robert. I am here to ask for y'all to support Seattle Social Housing Developers. Seattle passed the social housing developer initiatives by overwhelming margins. Seattle desperately wants to see social housing, and the comprehensive plan is a wonderful opportunity for all of you to take that mandate seriously and support it by giving the zoning density bonuses that it needs to be successful. Seattle is, as you've heard from many people, as you'll hear from more people, Seattle has a crisis of affordability. People are struggling. People are being pushed out constantly from their neighborhoods, from the city, and onto the streets. And part of that is because we haven't taken this affordability crisis seriously for a very long time, and this is the time to do it. We need density everywhere, and we need it now. So I urge you to please support Councilmember Kettles Amendment 61, to support density bonuses for social and affordable housing, so we can actually get up, get it running, get it going. And I also urge you to support Councilmember Hollingsworth Amendment 78. I'm a public school teacher. We need more housing near schools. We need housing that families can live in. They're being pushed out of the cities and are-
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff with no gray hair, okay? But it's flowing on the shoulders. I love it. Okay, Sandy, you are up, number 35, and then number 36.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. Yeah, I'm Sandy with Tree Action Seattle, and I did want to offer a correction to the stat that was just quoted. The greatest number of trees actually being removed right now in Seattle are due to construction. We're losing about 70 trees a week total, but most of those are due to construction. That changed in November of 2024. So we can build dense, walkable housing shaded by big trees, but it won't happen without clear standards. Amendments 93 and 102 bring us closer to what cities like Portland, DC, and, sorry, I get so nervous up here, and New York already require. Of the 12 tree amendments, only these fully set us up for success. 93 guarantees planting space, and 102 closes loopholes that allow clear cuts. Thank you, council members, for offering eight other amendments. I really appreciate it, but only 93 and 102 are comprehensive and provide that protection without locking in loopholes. And please add Tier 3 to Amendment 102. Thanks.
Thank you. Sandy, number 36, followed 37, 38, and 39, and then 40. Hi.
Hello there.
I'm Akash from District 6. Hello.
Yep, just starting. Yep, you're good. We'll start the time when you start. Go ahead, Akash.
I'm Akash Monapath from District 6. I'm a graduate student in atmospheric and climate science at the University of Washington. I'm here to support all amendments that expand commercial use zoning, increase walkability, and reduce parking requirements. As a climate scientist, I have a front row seat, spectating how climate change has gone from an academic concern to a challenge our cities must confront head-on. However, I worry how our cities continue to expand horizontally, pushing further into forested lands and increasing emissions via longer commute times. Please pass Amendment 61 and other related amendments to provide density bonuses across the city and to remove parking minimums, allowing for more sustainable development in the future. That's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you so much. 37, 38, 39, and 40. Is that 39?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia, and I'm a D6 resident. Today, I turned 27 years old, and since I was 21, I've been coming down to City Hall to ask the council to protect trees. I hope this is the last time I have to come up here. Our tree removal rates on private property have tripled in the last couple of years. Seattle is number five in the nation for heat islands, and delaying tree protections just six months from now would result in the loss of another 2,000 trees. The time to act is now. Please pass Amendments 93, 102, and 77, and if you can, please revise 102 to include the protection of tier 3 trees. Please reject other tree amendments. As we have discussed with you already, some cement in loopholes and others overlap with 93 and 102. Please reject Amendment 72 because it will pollute our watersheds by allowing building close to ECAs. Thank you.
Number 38, Caroline.
Hi, my name is Caroline Russell. I am a District 3 resident, and I'm here to speak in favor of all amendments that increase density, including Amendment 34, 66, and especially Councilmember Kettles Amendment 61. I've lived in Seattle for seven years, and in my time here, I've seen my friends and neighbors become increasingly rent-burdened, forced to leave the neighborhoods they call their homes, and priced out of the city altogether. Everyone is feeling this, and the incredible popularity of the social housing ballot initiatives showed how badly voters want more affordable housing. We want to live in dense, walkable communities where we can put down roots and raise families. Neighborhood charm means nothing to people who cannot afford to live here. This is an invaluable opportunity to make Seattle livable for everybody, and I encourage you to not waste it. Pass Amendment 61. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. We have, are you Sarah?
I'm 40.
Number 40. Okay, Sarah. And there's no number 30. Is there a 39? It's scratched out, but I just want to double-check. Okay, so 41 through 50, you are going to rise. And 41 through 50, you all are next on deck. Just one second, Sarah, while people kind of get up and move, so you're not interrupted a little bit. So 41 through 50, you are next. And just for the record, and we have people signing up, we have over 100 people? I'm sorry. I say 100. My mom, 100. We have over 100. I always say 100. She gets mad. 100. She's an English major. Okay. Sarah, you are up.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah, and I'm a D4 voter. Please pass any and all amendments that support more housing and social housing, more neighborhood centers, and my personal favorite, Amendment 84, which removes parking requirements. Millions of people will be moving to this region over the next decade, and that amendment, along with building up and not out, is the best thing we can do to preserve the natural environment from sprawl. I gave up my car in 2017 to do my part to combat climate change. As elected officials, please do yours and support density, so more people can make fewer car trips, our single biggest contributor to CO2 emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. 41, Spencer, followed by Noah, 42. Spencer, hello.
Hello. My name is Spencer Rawls. I'm a renter and a board member of the Capitol Hill Community Council, speaking on my own behalf. Capitol Hill is a great place to live, in large part because the city allowed it to be made up of dense, mixed-use developments. So many people choose to live there in spite of the expense that it has currently and in spite of other problems caused by the expense, such as unhoused neighbors who are frequently in crisis. Many more people want to live there but can't afford to. So I have, I want to support several amendments to help support, to help improve the affordability. That includes Rink's Amendment Number 34 for more neighborhood centers, Kettles Amendment 61 to help the social housing developer, 84 because building parking is expensive and that (beep), which is bad for the environment, and Hollingsworth's Amendment 78 to dispel the myth that only single-family houses can be family-sized. Everyone can live in dense housing.
Thank you, Spencer. Next, we have 42, Noah, followed by 43, Austin. Hold on. We'll turn it on. You're all good. That was a warm-up.
Thank you, council members. My name is Noah Williams. I live on the sea line in West Seattle. And in light of recent, very heavy national events, I'd just like to ask you to consider the following. The social fabric of the United States is crumbling. We are a deeply unhealthy society that is teetering on the edge. The only rational and moral response to this is to do a complete 180. I ask you to take every measure possible to make Seattle a healthy, sustainable city. When everyone has a home to come back to at the night, end of the night, when everybody can meet their neighbors and ride alongside them rather than honk at them impatiently, when children feel safe and welcome and get to move on their own two feet or wheels of their own propulsion, everybody is healthier. Build the housing, build the transit, and build the community centers to back it up. Amendments 34, 61, 66, 70, 76, 78, 84, 89, 90, and 91 support that. Our future is in your hands, council members. And with that, I wish you good luck, because we're all counting on you.
Thank you, Noah. Who lives on the sea line? All right, number 43, and then 44. Hi, Austin.
Hi, my name's Austin Shea. I'm a renter in District 7. Today is my birthday, and the only reason I could be here is because my company gives us the day off for that. I wanted to use my day off to come here and acknowledge the numerous working-class people who are struggling and don't have the luxury of taking time away from the responsibilities to stand in here and make their voices heard. That being said, I want to express my support for any and all amendments that expand neighborhood centers, allow more housing, and expand commercial zoning. The people who will benefit most from these things are people who don't have the luxury of being here today. We're currently facing an affordability crisis, and very few people will be able to afford a single-family home here in the future. I want to live in a city that welcomes all of our neighbors, not just the multimillionaires and people who have inherited property. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, and happy birthday. Let's say happy birthday to Austin on... Hey, Austin's birthday! All right. This is your second birthday?
Second birthday we have today.
Oh, the second birthday we have. Happy birthday, Julia. I didn't, not know it was your birthday. Happy birthday.
Birthday today?
It's today. Happy birthday, Julia. I apologize. I missed that. That's my bad. Emily, is your birthday?
Not today!
Okay. All right, well, happy regular day. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, folks. My name is Emily Pike. I'm a renter living in Ballard. I work downtown at Pike Place Market, and I'm a staff member at a theater on Capitol Hill. My life in Seattle is simple, beautiful, and just barely affordable because I live, work, and play in some of the city's densest, most walkable, and transit-accessible neighborhoods. I enthusiastically support amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, which add or expand neighborhood centers, those which eliminate parking requirements, those which encourage the development of small businesses and allow corner stores on all lots, and those which incentivize affordable and social housing, multi-bedroom and accessible units, apartment balconies and stacked flats. I live in a stacked flat with a balcony. It rules. I've lived in Seattle for 15 years, and in 10 years, I want to be at City Hall commenting on the next update to the Comprehensive Plan, but if we don't make bold choices now to make the city more affordable, I don't like my odds. So thank you for your proposals, thank you for your time. Thank you in advance for helping us build a vibrant and equitable city.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have 45, 46. Alexander, welcome.
Hello, council members. My name is Alexander Booth, and I live in Green Lake. I will be counting on several amendments. I'm an affordable housing architect with eight years of experience designing affordable homes. I have seen the housing crisis firsthand, delayed transit, drug use, tent fires, and bodies in the street. Community and city inaction leads to death. There is no single solution, but the following proposed amendments together make strong victories towards helping solve this housing crisis. Support Amendment 66 to allow more commercial uses in neighborhoods. Support Amendment 34 to allow more neighborhood centers. Amendment 78 to give density bonuses for family-sized apartments near schools. Support incentives for stacked flats, which are critical to universal accessibility. Critically, pass Amendment 61, provide social and affordable housing density bonuses nationwide, and pass Amendment 84 to eliminate parking requirements, matching cities across the political spectrum that have already passed these, ended these expensive mandates. Lastly, as an affordable housing architect, from personal experience, I say do not support Amendment 102. I love trees, but people matter more. These amendments will make, move Seattle towards an equitable, affordable, and vibrant future, and help prepare Seattle to be an inevitable climate-safe haven. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, Alexander. Next, we have 46, Riley, followed by 47, Lynn.
Hi, council. I'm Riley Avron with West Seattle Urbanism. I'm speaking on the Comprehensive Plan. Our restrictive zoning has turned what could be a city with a home for everyone into a place where it's a zero-sum game, where only the wealthy can win. And that zoning is rooted in a century-old plan explicitly for discrimination and exclusion. The good news is that the arbitrary lines we drew a century ago, you can erase today. I urge you to support Amendments 7 and 84, ending parking mandates which prioritize car storage over trees. Amendment 34, creating new neighborhood centers, especially at Alki, near where I live. Amendment 60 and 63, allowing social housing citywide. Amendment 89, supporting eight stacked flats, and in general, focus on making it easier for us to build homes for us. You have an opportunity to make Seattle a more welcoming, affordable community for all. Please seize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Next, we have Lynn, 47, followed by 48, Ruth.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lynn Best from Broadview. I am, I urge you to support revised Amendment 93 and Amendment 102. These amendments would help our neighborhoods stay green while we grow. Seattle can do better than the current plan, which would eliminate over 200 acres of existing tree canopy by the city's own analysis. I urge you to support Amendment 102. This amendment gives the city authority to request alternative site plans from developers, allowing us to achieve comparable density while maximizing tree retention. It also will create a clearer, more consistent code by simplifying the definition of tree protection areas. I ask you to support a revised version of Amendment 93, which would strengthen tree preservation and planting requirements for lots undergoing development. The proposed minimum planting area requirements are essential to ensure trees can actually survive and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Ruth, followed by Michael Gillonwater and Michael Rowe. Hopefully, I said that correctly. You'll tell me up here. Hello.
Hi, my name is Ruth Tamandal. My birthday was Wednesday. I've been a homeowner in the Seattle area since 2003. I currently live in Green Lake, and I really love it. And I'm here to ask you to support all the amendments that will let Seattle build more housing, especially 7, 34, and 42. I'm privileged to live in a wonderful, vibrant, walkable neighborhood across the street from a six-story apartment building, and it's really awesome. I can walk to the light rail, I can walk to the library, I can walk to PCC, I can walk to the gym, I can get around on my bike. It's great. I can walk to locally-owned restaurants and other small businesses. My neighborhood is really dense. It's full of trees. I really love living there, and everyone should have a home in a neighborhood like that. They should be able to live in such a great place. The only thing I really don't like about my neighborhood is how many of my neighbors are living and dying on the streets because they can't afford housing. So please don't pass up this opportunity to pass robust, permanent legislation that will improve housing availability in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And happy belated birthday. 49 and 50, hello.
Hello, council. Michael Gillonwater from the Laurel Heights neighborhood. Please unbound Seattle to build more housing and dense housing. We want walkable neighborhoods. We want more neighborhood centers. And by that, I mean support Amendments 33, 34, and 42. We want more neighborhood stores. That's Amendments 65 and 66. We want stacked flats to be viable to build, Amendment 89. And we want to end the mandating of parking minimums. That's Amendment 7 and 86. And I'll go specifically on that. The share of the number of households in Seattle that are car-free is more than 20% now, according to the latest data, and growing. Only 1 in 10 people moving in Seattle is keeping a car or has a car, so that number is going to keep growing. Other leading cities around Washington and around the country have already done this. To argue that a SEPA appeal to having less parking is going to win the day on environmental grounds is not really...
Thank you, Michael. Before you start, Michael Rowe, we're going to ask for numbers 51 through 60. You are next, 51 through 60. If you all will stand up and start lining up, we'll just give a second, Michael, before you start, so we can get all those people.
And then here's even.
Thank you. 140. Keep going. 140. And we're at speaker number 50, and we have 140 people signed up so far. We'll keep, well, I think it's more. 180. I lied. 180. All right, go ahead, Michael.
Hi, Michael Rowe. I live in Pioneer Square. It's where density and historic buildings coexist. They can be that way, so you can have both, indeed. I cross the Weller Street pedestrian bridge...
If we pause the time real quick? Hold on, Michael. If you speak in the microphone a little bit loud, you can hold it up. There, yeah, there you go. Perfect. And just speak into the mic, so we can hear you.
So I cross the Weller Street pedestrian bridge to go into CID, where I do my shopping. And it's great to have a neighborhood where you do have food centers to go to and buy groceries, and that is what I support with Rink's Amendment 34, where everyone can have that kind of ability to live, work, eat, shop, play in the same area. This is what makes neighborhoods great, new people coming in. I'm a two-year resident of Seattle, and neighbors make a city feel welcoming, and neighbors who welcome you. And this is also supporting Amendments 70, 89, 90, and 91, so where we can expand that development bonus, and we can also reduce parking minimums in the city, because getting around a city makes a city feel good. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have 51 through 60. That's Brooke, Mark, Ashley, Justin. Hi, Brooke.
Hello. My name is Brooke, and I am a renter out of District 3, Capitol Hill, who studies sustainable city planning and now works as an engineer here in Seattle. I am lucky to be able to afford to live in an area where I can access grocery stores, parks, and friends' apartments on foot, but this is unfortunately currently a privilege in Seattle. I want to live in a city where this kind of lifestyle, which benefits my physical and mental health, is accessible to everyone. My neighbors and I would like to see more density and transit-oriented development My neighbors and I would like to see more density and transit-oriented development and more ways to make traveling without a car accessible and irresistible to Seattle residents. Less parking and more green spaces and trees, more housing that is dense and affordable, more focus on communities and addressing root causes of our issues. Yes to amendments 34, 61, 66, 78, and 84. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brooke. Next we have Mark, followed by Ashley and Justin.
Hi. My name is Mark, and I have been privileged to live in Broadview neighborhood since 1991, so I've seen a lot of changes, and I still love this city. Retired now. I came primarily here to learn more about social housing. I can't speak passionately as others about this concept because I'm just learning about it myself. I think we need to keep new ideas about housing coming in all the time. Housing shortages and houselessness is the main root of many social and, I think, environmental issues. What I am sure about is that the current system only works for those who can afford it. So I think we need to keep an open mind and not give up and keep working towards that. And I agree with almost everything I've heard today, almost. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark. Next we have Ashley, Justin, Logan, then Max. Hi, Ashley.
Hello. Hi, City Council. This is Ashley, co-chair of the LGBTQ Commission, renter in District 5, speaking here in support of more neighborhood centers, higher-density zoning, transit-oriented development, removing parking requirements, and also in favor of stacked flat bonuses on all lots. We have a unique opportunity right now to submit Seattle as a city that will welcome the continuous influx of people looking for a place to call home as they're targeted by our government. People are looking for cities that won't create policies that target them or their families for being trans, queer, immigrants, or even just looking anything other than white. As someone who moved here to the Lake City neighborhood from North Carolina in 2019 in search of a place where I could call home and thrive as an openly queer person, I know that Seattle has been that safe haven for me, but I also know that we clearly don't have enough housing and resources for the continuous influx that we will continue to see, or we will continue to see. Please vote in favor of Haulingsworth's plan that prepares us for a future where people from targeted disenfranchised communities can both remain comfortably in the city but also join us here, enjoy the inclusive, welcoming policy.
Thank you, Ashley. Justin, Logan, then Max.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm a homeowner of a single-family detached home in Wedgewood, and here to support growing the neighborhood centers in and around Wedgewood, as well as the Complete Communities Coalition's proposal for stacked flats. First, I love northeast Seattle, and I'm so excited about the increased commercial growth along our main strip. 35th Avenue Northeast has been underutilized for years. More businesses and restaurants are coming, but slowly. The limitations on the current space and walkability are hampering more business growth. Allowing new development would be an opportunity to refresh some of the long vacant parcels and create more vibrant community. In fact, Wedgewood Neighborhood Center does not continue far enough north. There are underutilized commercial and multi-, and residential multifamily housing properties along 35th Avenue Northeast up through North 87th Street, creating a neighborhood. I would also like to discuss stacked flats. Having lived in apartments and houton houses, I can confidently say it's easier to live on one floor instead of three or four. The current development would.
Thank you, Justin. 55 through 60, Logan.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Logan Schmidt, a District 5 resident, and I'm here on behalf of the Master Builders' Association of King and Snohomish Counties, representing more than 2,500 home builders, architects, and tradespeople across our region. Seattle's comprehensive plan is more than a policy document. It's a blueprint for the city's future. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to decide whether Seattle will rise to the challenge of our housing shortage or risk falling further behind. The choices you make will determine whether teachers, nurses, tradespeople, and families can continue to call Seattle home. Home builders stand ready to partner in the work of providing the diverse housing Seattle needs to meet demand. That means expanding housing opportunities in every neighborhood, strengthening affordability, and ensuring Seattle grows into a more inclusive, livable, and sustainable city. I submitted written comments yesterday outlining our positions on specific amendments, but I want to close by underscoring this. Seattle cannot afford half measures. The plan must open doors to housing, not close them. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Max, 56. Apu, 57.
Good afternoon. My name is Max. I'm a renter in Roosevelt. I also work at the University District Food Bank as a pantry coordinator. I'm here on my own time speaking to y'all because through my work, I have not only met hundreds of families who are struggling to put food on the table, but also grocery and restaurant workers, food producers, delivery drivers, the folks that feed our city who are struggling to live in our community. So I'm asking that you build density everywhere, that you take bold action to strengthen, not weaken, the comprehensive plan, to roll back the exclusionary zoning that has held our city back for so long, specifically amendment 34 to add more neighborhood centers, amendment 61 to fund social housing and add bonuses for that, and really any bold action you can take to address this crisis and to incentivize more housing density in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. 57, 58, 59, and 60.
My name is Apu Mishra. I live in D2, and I've been fortunate enough to live and work and now raise a family in this city that we love. But over this couple of decades, the, my friends with young children have increasingly gotten priced out of this city and had to move. These are, these are people who are nurses, federal workers, teachers, and they can't afford to live in the city as many families with young children can't because it's just gotten so unaffordable. We desperately need social housing. We desperately need affordable housing in this city, and without it, one of many effects we are seeing is the drop in public school enrollment, which is threatening the funding of our schools. I urge you to please vote yes on council members, Kettles, amendment 61 to kickstart.
Affordable housing all over the city.
Thank you, Apu.
And Haulingsworth's amendment 878. Please have a good night.
Thank you. I was cutting you off until you said my name, and then I was like, oh, go ahead, you can talk. I'm just playing. Thank you, Apu. Just playing. Orla, number 58, 59, and 60.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you so much.
Is your mic on? It is? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
That should be good. If you get closer to the mic.
Last Friday, I was walking along. I live in northeast Seattle, and I looked out towards typically one of my favorite vistas, where I can see Lake Washington, the east side, and all the way out to the Cascades. Last Friday, I couldn't even see Lake Washington because of the fires, and Normandy of the lake was right before me. I couldn't even see it. So we know that science tells us three things. One, that trees clean air. Two, urban forests also mitigate hot spots and hot temperatures. Three, cities like Baltimore and Austin have done research that show that mature trees, not young trees, but mature trees, help to reduce crime. So check out those studies by Baltimore and Austin. I sent that study to some of the council members this past week. So as a former tree ambassador to the city, I'm asking you to please protect our tree canopy. Cutting down 350 trees a month is unacceptable, so we can grow with.
Thank you, Orla. Thank you, Orla. Next we have 59 and 60. Fiona, did I say that right? Awesome. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Fiona Shea. I'm a renter in District 3, and I'm a volunteer with How's Our Neighbors. As a trans-minuten wage earner in this city and an aspiring urban designer, I know how unaffordable this city is and also what it could be. At this very moment, I have multiple friends who have been couch surfing for weeks, if not months, in search of a miracle that is stable housing in this city that is affordable, and there are many more besides them in even worse situations. This is both ridiculous and unacceptable. At the same time, I know that Seattle has the potential to be a place with green, walkable, bikable streets, and transit and housing for everyone, especially our most vulnerable communities. To do this, I ask that you pass amendments 34, 66, 70, 78, 84, 89, 90, and 91, championed by How's Our Neighbors volunteers today, and especially amendment 61 to provide social and affordable housing density bonuses all across our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ann.
Yes, my name's Ann Marie, and I'm from northeast Seattle.
Welcome.
I would like, I would like you to vote yes on 93, 102, and 72, and then I'd like you to pause for a minute and remember your favorite tree that you ever had, because everybody has a friend that's a tree. This is a painting I did, and it shows the tree's spirit being very sad because it's been killed. We all know that trees are our lifeline. We need to just recognize it, and that's all. I don't have a lot more. Just take a breath and remember the trees and bring your energy up and go. Thank you.
We will bring our energy up and go. Thank you. Number 61 through 70, you are up. I forgot to get you all in the queue. 61 through 70, you all are up. 61 through 70. So that's starting with Sarah. You are first, followed by John. 61 through 70. Welcome. Give us one second, and so we can get our timer going. And y'all, this is the best clerk ever, okay? I just want y'all to know. It's like a walking encyclopedia of. Thank you. Everybody loves Amelia. All right. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. 61. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Hello, my name is Sarah Lynn Ogden. I have been a resident of Seattle for 12 years. When I was deciding where to move after college, I was looking for somewhere I could feel safe. When I was growing up, I was surrounded by rhetoric that demonized anyone who didn't fit a certain mold, from listening to my peers talk about how they would, given the opportunity, commit violence against the LGBT community, to watching discussion for an event for women, encouraging women to simply wear pants to church to protest gender inequality, get shut down after death threats. I knew it was critical to find somewhere with a broader acceptance of diversity. I found that place in Seattle. I have met so many others who have come here to escape similar and much worse situations. I am here today because I want that to be, I want there to be space in our city for more people to have the opportunity that I had. And in order for this to be possible, we must expand the housing stock dramatically. I ask that you expand the number of neighborhood centers in this plan by voting yes on amendment 34. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Number 62, welcome. Followed by 63, 64.
Thank you.
And we have two mics, everyone, two mics. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is John Matheson. I'm in District 6, Ballard. I'm a, let's see, on the mighty 40 bus route, 28 bus route, fifth-generation Ballard Norwegian, five kids, three of them are currently trying to find apartments in the city, and that is presenting huge challenges for them, and obviously, so I really want you to work as hard as you can to get my, my kids and everybody's kids housing. I'm going to encourage you towards housing abundance in the city of Seattle. None of my children have cars, and my family is car-light itself, so bike and transit to, we bike and transit to most locations, so we'd actually, we would like to encourage you to cater to people who decide to live car-light or, or without cars. We ask that you reduce or eliminate parking minimums, support 7 and 86, and maximize neighborhood centers, support 34. Thanks so much.
Awesome. Thank you, John, from Ballard, with five kids. Got you. 63 and Terry, number 64. 63?
Yeah.
Awesome.
My name is Seamus. I'm a resident of Capitol Hill. I haven't had a car since 2004, and living on Capitol Hill has afforded me the luxury to bike and walk and bus all over this city. I've seen firsthand how density can shape a neighborhood over a 20-year period. It's without a doubt that the hill is significantly different than it was 20 years ago, and I'm thrilled by the energy and diversity of the neighborhood. However, artificially high rents negatively impact renters and small businesses, while ugly buildings are constructed that add no character to the material, to the neighborhood, out of materials that will eventually end up in the landfill. I urge the council to adopt a vision for well-designed and environmentally safe buildings that add character to existing neighborhoods. Fiber cement boards do not add character. We need mandates for circular use, construction, and new builds, incentivize adapted reuse projects, pedestrian-only streets, and reverse social housing for all of our working-class neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Seamus. 54, or excuse me, 64, 65, and 66.
Hi, Terry Williams. I moved here in 1974. I was a video artist. I live in the Puget Ridge neighborhood of West Seattle, east of Delridge. I'm a homeowner only because we bought a house in 1995. At no time since 2000 or so have I been, would I have been able to afford a house that was new on the market. For 40 years, nearly every mayor has promised urban villages, real city neighborhoods near transit hubs with mixed-income housing, density, and shops, restaurants, and places to work, all walkable, all affordable. We keep inching in that direction. Sometimes we take one step forward, two steps back. Here's a cautionary tale. High Point was redeveloped in the early 2000s. I went to the open house of that place. It was a half-mile-by-a-half-mile area with 3,000 people living in it, and I said to the people there, where are the shops, the coffee shops, the restaurants? Where will people go and walk to? They said, oh, we can't do that because it's zoned residential. I applaud this council for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Jasmine, number 65, and then Jean, 66.
Thank you, Chair Haulingsworth and council members, for tireless work and years' worth of intentional and careful engagement as we build together a beautiful future for all of us. My name is Jasmine Smith, Director of Local Advocacy for Futurewise, and when we look at the future we want, it's one where everyone has a home, where every community has a corner store and a coffee shop, and every park has neighbors to enjoy it. We have the opportunity to be intentionable, intentional about undoing a century of housing discrimination and exclusionary zoning by welcoming people to live in and be able to afford to stay in every neighborhood with restoring all 38 neighborhood centers. We have the opportunity to ensure all types of housing for all people are able to be built with affordable housing and stacked flat bonuses. We have the opportunity to plant paradise over pavement by changing out parking spaces for people and trees. We have the opportunity to keep our schools open by keeping neighborhood centers. We have the opportunity to keep communities complete and connected for kids that yearn to live on Sesame Street. Let's get wise for a future that includes opportunities for us all.
Thank you, Jasmine. Number 66, followed by 67, 68.
Hi, I'm Jean. I support more housing through the comp plan. I moved to Seattle back in 1979. I was a starving artist, a dancer, and I was able to rent a studio apartment in Capitol Hill. Mid-'90s, I was able to buy a house for $150,000 in West Seattle. I know those times are long gone. And I love trees. I also love people, well, most of them. I worry the next generation of artists, nurses, as well as teachers, and a whole host of other people will not be able to afford Seattle. I'm also very alarmed by the Trump administration and everything that's being done. I want Seattle to be a welcoming city for everyone that fears persecution, and we need more affordable housing to achieve that. I support every amendment that allows for stacked flats, affordable housing, and neighborhood centers, which frankly means it's more fun to live, and particularly around Alki, I will enjoy those magnificent trees of Schmidt's Park.
Thank you. Jesse Simpson, 67.
Hi, Jesse Simpson here, co-chair of the Complete Communities Coalition. I'm a lifelong Seattleite living in Capitol Hill, and I love my dense, walkable, and transit-rich neighborhood. I don't love that I see my neighbors unsheltered, unhoused, and suffering on our streets every single day. Their plight is a testament to Seattle's deep housing shortage and affordability crisis. I'm here to support a bold, comprehensive plan that goes as far as possible to allow for the abundant and affordable housing that we need in every neighborhood. I'm heartened by the many pro-housing amendments that have been proposed that take us towards Alternative 5. I urge you to say yes to affordable housing in every neighborhood with 60, 61, and 63. Say yes to stacked flats, accessible homes for the next generation of Seattleites to raise families in the age and place with 89 and 91, and say yes to new neighborhood centers to allow more people to live near transit, small businesses, elementary schools, and major parks with 34. You have an opportunity before you shape the trajectory of Seattle's housing future to change a broken status quo and make Seattle a welcoming, inclusive city. I ask you to make the most of it and put housing first. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. Next we have Erin Court and Tara. And I apologize if I say your name wrong. Hi, Erin.
Hi.
Hey.
I'm Erin Etterher. And I'm here, I'm going to specifically talk about amendment 61 in support of. I am a houseless resident and registered voter in District 6. I'm one of the thousands of chronically houseless residents of Seattle who has struggled immensely to both obtain and retain stable supportive housing in this city. As someone who has struggled with housing instability at every point in my life, I cannot stress enough just how vital of a role social and affordable housing plays in not just resolving housing crises, but preventing them as well. Passing amendment 61 could kickstart social and affordable housing in areas of the city that were effectively off-limits before, not only creating more new housing opportunities for already-houseless people, but encouraging diversity and accessibility in already-existing spaces across the city for everyone who calls Seattle home. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Number 60, 69, and then 70?
This came in solidarity.
Oh, oh, good. Okay, first support. Good job. Awesome. Thank you. You were, wait, so that means we were number 69?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Court. Okay, so then we have number 70. Before number 70 goes, it's Tara?
[laughing].
I can't.
Man, if I had a nickel, it's Tara.
Tara, my bad.
You don't know me, so it's cool.
No, that's my bad. Before you go, Tara, 71 through 80, if you could start lining up in the queue, 71 through 80, you all are next. 71 through 80. Yes. You said Tara.
Tara, yeah.
If you had a quarter.
Or you there, but Tara specifically.
You said if you had a quarter, you'd be rich. Yeah, for every time. All right, hold on. 71 through 80, you all are next. Awesome. And Tara, go ahead and get started.
All right. Thank you, council members. My name is Tara Camp. I am a D3 renter, a conservationist, a housing justice advocate, and an organizer for Futurewise, speaking on the comp plan, specifically amendments 34, 60, 63, 86, 89, and 91. These amendments provide us with opportunities to actively address the affordable housing and climate crises we are currently facing in this city. We now have a chance to rectify our past, past actions and lend a hand to those who who deserve housing and an affordable, vibrant, and green community to live in. Two things can absolutely be true at the same time. We can keep our greenery while building homes to meet capacity needs. We need to remember that these housing and climate issues are not mutually exclusive, but intrinsically intertwined. As a transplant from Los Angeles, I am so incredibly blessed and lucky to live in Cap Hill, surrounded by trees and parks, to be able to actually afford my rent, to be able to walk easily to transit, grocery stores, and other amenities, and I desperately want that for every, uh, every other Seattle resident, regardless of race, class, disability, or otherwise. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Tara. Cassie, number 71 and 72.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
71.
Just make sure you speak right close into the mouth.
Right, close into it. Awesome. Good afternoon, I'm Cassie Clayton. I've just moved here from Dallas, Texas, and Dallas is a concrete city. It is not walkable. There is no serious public transportation, and it is aggressive, to say the least. I've had the privilege of traveling the country, and Seattle is my absolute favorite city, and I am here in downtown District 7. It's beautiful, and I'm here today, just moving here because of the beautifully different plans that Seattle is wanting to push forward to keep it progressive and to keep welcoming new humans. And that includes Amendment 34 to expand neighborhood centers, that includes 78 to create family-sized apartments near schools, 84, which does save trees, and removes parking requirements. In addition, 70, 89, 90, and 91 to increase the density for our stacked flats. Passing Amendment 61 to keep pushing Seattle forward is the biggest thing that I would urge you to do. So, take it from an outsider, Seattle can show the rest of the nation how to tackle housing with equity, climate change, and urgency. Thank you.
Awesome. And will the Cowboys make the playoffs? No. No, I'm just playing. Barbara, 72.
Boo.
72, is Barbara here? Barbara, once, twice? It's Barbara Glenn? She Barbara left? Okay, thank you so much. 73, Alexander. Awesome. Hello.
Hi, council. Hi, council members.
Yeah, right into the mic. Yep, and speaking, and you can lift the mic up, too, so you don't have to bend over. Awesome.
Perfect. Thank you. Hi, council members. My name is Alex, and I first want to express my support for all amendments that would promote density. However, I specifically want to support Amendments 7, 84, and 86, since I believe that reducing required parking is something that both the tree advocates and density advocates can get behind. In the last five years, Seattle has added only one new car for every 10 new residents, and car-free households now make up 1 in 5 Seattle households. Reducing and removing parking mandates will help reduce traffic and congestion by not requiring developers to add parking spots for people who don't want to use them and where they're not needed. It will help save tens of, uh, tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars on new developments, which can allow units to be more affordable for people who don't want to, uh, to use cars or to park their car there. And it can also allow more housing units on less land, which will make more space for trees. Voting to remove housing, uh, parking mandates will lead to more trees, more density, and more affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alexander. We have Orla, followed by Ethan, and then Jessica.
Hi, council. My name is Orla, and I wanted to start by thanking you for your hard work on, on these amendments. I'm a resident of Capitol Hill, and like a lot of my neighbors have expressed here today, I'm super grateful every day to live in a neighborhood with amazing access to public transit, vibrant and convenient businesses, and wonderful third places like Volunteer Park. The fact is that every Seattleite deserves to live, live in a neighborhood like mine, and you have the power to make that happen. The only way to make that happen, though, is to support increased density. So I urge you to support Amendment 34 to restore the eight neighborhood centers, and please support all amendments that pave the way for social housing, walkability, and increased transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Orla. Next, we have 75, 76. Ethan, Jessica.
Hello, council members. My name is Ethan Magnuson. I'm a resident of Councilmember Rivera's district. I live a five-minute walk away from Ravenna Park, and I deeply love my home. I am here today to speak against Councilmember Rivera's Amendment 40, which would gut the Ravenna Neighborhood Center. I've heard a lot about neighborhood character today. Well, I believe that our neighborhood character includes our moral character. It should, we're in a housing crisis. It should be our honor to welcome new neighbors into our lovely corner of the city. Now, Ravenna Cohen is a historic district, and some people say that history and density don't mix. You only have to walk across the park to see the four-story Park Vista Cooperative to see how wrong that is. If Amendment 40 passes, that gorgeous building would continue to be illegal to build today. I urge you to build more housing as our moral and historic duty. Vote no on Amendment 40, and of course, vote yes on 34.
Thank you, Ethan. Then we have Jessica, Erin, Elena, Ryan, and Eddie Lynn. Hey.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, council. Good to see you all. I'm Jess Yang. I'm a new Ballard homeowner and the HDC community organizer, speaking with the Complete Communities Coalition. I support a strong, comprehensive plan that incentivizes affordable housing development and density throughout the city. I'm heartened that many of the amendments submitted by council members move us in that direction, so thank you all for your hard work. I'm a trained social worker and a public health researcher, and I've worked directly with unhoused folks for the majority of my career. I don't want to speak on behalf of my clients, and I wish more of their voices and needs were present in a genuine way in this space, but instead, I'll speak to my work and my research experience. Housing works. Housing is a public health solution. We need housing across all income levels and especially neighborhoods that have historically fought against development to alleviate the strain of our current housing crisis and the growth that's sure to come. I've worked with young families, seniors, everyone in between, and we're all struggling with affordability and displacement, and we cannot respond to the current moment with moderation. We need your bold leadership to pass those amendments that most increase housing opportunities and density in our wonderful city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Erin, 77, 78, 79, and 80.
Hi. Commenting on the comprehensive plan and HB 1110, my name is Erin Roach. I am here as a voter, homeowner, resident, and as a friend of Freelard, inviting you to expand Fremont and Ballard urban centers until they kiss. Endless data supports further upzoning is rational policy, and the majority supported. I think the only holdup is fear and dreams of a few, so then consider mine. I dream of knocking down my expensive, small house on Third Avenue Northwest to build something bigger. Four is better than three, but I want to fit more of my friends and family. I want to also grow old running a shop below that sells beautiful objects, and what I fear is that my progeny won't share the opportunities I have, that they won't be able to live close to their friends, or worse, they won't be able to stay in the city. So please consider my dreams and fears. Please allow shops anywhere. Please expand Fremont and Ballard. Please know that modern tech makes it possible to safely develop on liquefaction or brownfield sites and harmoniously meet residential and industrial. Thank you for the consideration. For more data, visit freelard.org.
Awesome. Thank you, Erin. Next, we have Elena, Ryan, and Eddie.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Elena, and I'm here representing Friends of Little Saigon, a community-based nonprofit working to uplift the neighborhood and prevent displacement. I'm here to ask for your support for more family-sized housing in the comp plan, specifically supporting Amendments 19, 20, and 78. The CID prides itself as being a place of belonging for multiple generations, from seniors playing ping pong at Hing Hay Park to children trick-or-treating at an upcoming Halloween event that we're hosting. But families are being pushed out of our city at an alarming rate. Please pass Amendment 19, which aims to create two-bedroom units or larger for at least 25% of the city's new housing. We also ask that you pass Amendment 20, which supports seniors to live in cultural housing and stay in their communities near their kids and grandkids. Finally, please pass Amendment 78 to allow density bonuses for family-sized apartments near schools. Join us in stewarding multi-generational neighborhoods like the CID for the next 20 years and beyond. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we have Ryan, and then Eddie. Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Chair Hollingsworth. Ryan McKinster with Habitat for Humanity. I was, I'm here on behalf of Habitat to support a bold and comprehensive plan. For nearly 40 years, we've built affordable homeownership for over 2,600 families, and we currently have 70, or excuse me, 200 units in our pipeline for the next four years. That's 70% in Seattle for all of our properties across King County. Seattle faces a housing crisis that we all know about that demands action. We have 46,000 workers who live outside of the city and must commute over 25 miles a day, and 34,000 workers who cannot even afford to live in the city. Consider our homeowners Aurora, an educator and single mom, and LaShelle, a King County Metro bus driver, both who live in the city, do the projects that we have done in the past and that these plans would allow us to do more of. We strongly support the Communities Coalition amendments, expanding the affordable housing bonuses, as well as unlocking stacked flats citywide. These policies will help us create real homeownership opportunities that we're seriously lacking in the city. When teachers, bus drivers, and others cannot afford to live where they work.
Thank you, Ryan. You're all good. You can send your comments into us, too. Thank you, Ryan. Before you get started, Eddie, one second. We got 81 through 90. 81 through 90, if you all start getting ready in the queue, 81 through 90, you all are next. Thank you. I got the thumbs up from, let me find, from Nathan. Nathan Wall. That's a good basketball name. Nathan Wall for two? Yeah. No. He's like, no. All right. Eddie, you are good to go.
Thank you. My name's Eddie Lynn, and I'm fortunate to be a homeowner on Beacon Hill. I'm also a parent of two kids, and I'm deeply worried about their ability to stay in the city and the future of our city. We're a deeply segregated city. We're segregated based on race and class and homeowners versus renters. And we have some neighborhoods that are not very dense, that are, have plenty of trees and are million-dollar homes and great views of the Puget Sound or Lake Washington. And then we concentrate renters on busy, noisy, polluted arterials. Segregation is bad for our city. It's bad for our democracy. It's bad for our public schools, which are also deeply segregated because our housing is segregated. So please put an end to exclusionary zoning. Please support eight additional neighborhood centers, eliminate parking requirements, support stacked flat bonuses, allow corner stores everywhere, and please allow the social housing developer to access the same bonuses and exemptions as other affordable housing providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Next, we have Nathan. Hello, followed by Owen. 81 through 90, this is a reminder, 81 through 90 are up on deck.
All good? Okay, cool. I want to first thank Councilmember Rink, Councilmember Hollingsworth for offering some good amendments, and I actually want to thank Councilmember Kettle, too, despite some of our disagreements. This plan is better because of amendments you've worked on, so thank you. I highly encourage the council to vote for any amendment that expands density and makes Seattle more affordable. I am a college graduate living with my family in Holly Park. This city is unaffordable. I highly encourage the council to reject Amendment 40. I'm a little disappointed Councilmember Rivera is not here, but that's okay. Additionally, I want to stress the importance of pedestrian safety in our city. As somebody that does not drive, the city is dangerous. Del Ridge, MLK, Rainier, I don't know why I forgot those two, Aurora, they're dangerous streets. People get killed every day. So let's bring back Kirby. But I really want to see a city that is safer, more affordable, and denser, so I highly encourage you to do the right thing. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Nathan. Owen is next, followed by Rebecca, and then Joe Wall. Number 80, 82? Awesome. Yep, you're all good. I trust you. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, council members. I'm too tall, short for that one. I'm a resident of District 2, and I'm asking for a no on Amendments 39, 40, and 41. Shrinking these community neighborhood centers is going to be counterproductive to District 2, where we're already not the most walkable part of Seattle. Oh, yes, sorry. As a resident of District 4, I can testify that we are not a super-walkable district, and it would be great to have more amenities within walking distance to residents of District 4. Neighborhood centers will strengthen our community character. I know there's been a lot of folks that have been concerned about that, but being able to walk instead of drive 40 miles an hour to the nearest Costco brings people together, and it's good to have more of that because that community connection depends on human interaction and less on honking at each other. Neighborhood centers are good. That's it. Please vote no on those amendments.
Thank you, Owen. Next, we have Rebecca, 83, and then 84, Joe Wall.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Levine. I live in District 4 in an area now called the Ravenna Cowan Historic District. I'm calling on you to reject Amendments 40 and 81, which prop up a whitewashed version of history promoted by the historic district and would prevent our wealthy, predominantly white neighborhood of million-dollar homes from doing our part to address Seattle's housing shortage and affordability crisis. I'm one of over 75 Ravenna-area residents who submitted a letter last night urging you to pass a comp plan that opens our area so that more people can live in a walkable neighborhood with great parks, schools, and transit without further displacing low-income communities and communities of color. My neighbor Jay Vlaziewicz, past chair of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, signed this letter but couldn't be here. He asked me to share that he feels strongly that both amendments undermine the intention of the city and the comp plan to provide additional housing density and without encumbering future developments with applications that will be unduly costly. So reject 40, 81, and 102. Support 17, 34, 61, 66.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next, we have Joe Wall, Ruth, and then Jessica. Joe?
Hello, council members. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. A lot of great testimony here. I just want to step back a little bit and see who's not in the room. And I think it's the big tech companies that bring in hundreds of thousands of employees and pay them way more than most of us in this room make. And when housing gets built, they go to the head of line and they buy it, and they can pay more than we can. And so long as we welcome all the tech jobs that we can possibly get our arms around to come to Seattle, fill our sky with 168 high-rise buildings. When the last one built in Tacoma was in 1970, the issue of equity comes to mind, and why do we want to hoard all growth in the city of Seattle, when for the last 20 years we've been bulldozing our neighborhoods, building everything like mad, and it doesn't come out affordable? This whole thing is just repeating the process of trying to do too much, trying to be too much. We'll be back here 10 years without another housing crisis.
Thank, thank, thank you, Joe. Next, we have Ruth, followed by Jessica, 85 and 86. We have two mics, by the way, everyone, two mics.
Got my glasses. Good afternoon. I'm Ruth Dight, urban planner, representing over 1,300 Friends of Queen Anne who oppose tripling the size of the Queen Anne Urban Center, pushing five-story apartments into 37 blocks of NR zoning, threatening 600 homes in the heart of our community. Classic Victorian and Craftsman homes, our city's history will be demolished, not converted into affordable middle housing. Queen Anne is close to downtown, but steep slopes limit access. Travel to downtown from Queen Anne and places like Finney Ridge or Laurelhurst differs by zero to three minutes. Why then so much growth here? We already experienced 40-minute delays getting off the hill. Imagine the congestion with 46,000 more homes. We propose removing 25 acres from the urban center and adding a Nickerson Neighborhood Center. This puts people closer to bike trails, high-capacity, and will reduce traffic impacts. Please adopt our amendment to Comp Plan Amendment 50 to revise the Queen Anne Urban Center boundary. Thank you.
Number 80, thank you. Number 86, 87, and 88.
Hello. Are you number 86? I am 86, yeah. Yeah, sorry. This totally takes me back to grade school, where, you know, you watch everyone before you, and you're like, shit, I want to be like that person. Okay, so trees and green spaces have always been there for the community. They provide a safe haven for quiet spaces that help citizens like myself process things from traumas to what job I want to do and where I want to go with my life. As Seattle has been growing more dense, trees and these quiet spaces have been seemingly left out of the picture. Please vote yes on Amendments 93 and 102, so we can have spaces that are accessible so people like myself can live conscious and not just reactive lives. Thank you, guys, for my time.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. We have Garrett, number eighty-seven, followed by eighty-eight. Garrett, you have really nice handwriting, and I'm not being sarcastic.
I appreciate that. That's the first time in my life I've ever heard that.
Okay. Well, it was on TV, so go ahead.
Chair Hollingsworth, councilmembers, thank you so much for holding public comment, including after work hours, so more folks can participate. My name is Garrett Plesko-Moore, and I'm a renter in Seattle. I'm going to be commenting on the comprehensive plan. My partner and I both live with chronic disease, and we depend on our access to clean air and walkable neighborhoods to be able to live a healthy, fulfilling lives. We understand firsthand the need both for ample trees and affordable housing here in Seattle. But the cost of housing is a heavy burden. Our rent has doubled in just over five years. We want to start a family here, but we're unsure if we can even afford that. I worry we'll need to leave our friends, our chosen family, and our community just to be able to raise kids. We may have to join the many thousands of Seattleites that are no longer able to afford to live in this city, our home, leaving this place and contributing to sprawl, sprawl that, by the way, will be the greatest threat to Washington's beautiful dense forests. Please pass Amendments thirty-four, sixty-six, ninety, and bonuses for social housing projects. Create a safe, welcoming Seattle for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. And we'll work hard, so you can start your family. That'd be phenomenal. All right, eighty-eight, Jean, and then eighty...
Hi. Thank you for your work. I'm Jean Hugving. I've learned a lot of things sitting here today. Not all community neighborhood centers have the same needs and possibilities. I live in the Gasworks Park Neighborhood Center. This was simply dropped in, not even in the mayor's proposal, into Amendment thirty-four. I'm against Amendment thirty-four, not against all neighborhood centers. I am against thirty-three as a pervasive thing. Here's my question to you: Do you think that adequate notification of the community and adequate planning has gone into creating the rezoning for Gasworks Park Neighborhood Center? This completely new designation was made on August eleventh.
Thank you, Jean. You can send your comments in, too, as well. We have eighty-nine for Rebecca, and then number ninety. And then, before you go, I'm going to ask numbers ninety-one through one-hundred, one-hundred, ninety-one through one-hundred, to start to stand up and be in the queue on deck. Give me one second while they get up, so you're not interrupted. So I'm calling on number ninety-one through one-hundred. We have one-hundred-and-eighty people signed up, and people are still coming in. This is a time check, just so people know. It's almost close to five o'clock, and the registration for the sign-ups close at six-thirty, so there's still ninety minutes. We have staff out there ready for when you come down, you'll be able to sign up. Awesome. Okay, so ninety-one through one-hundred, you are on deck, and this is number eighty-nine, Rebecca.
Hi. I'm Rebecca Benfield. Please vote no on the last-minute Amendments thirty-three and thirty-four and five-to-eight stories in South Wallingford. This is a multigenerational community with individuals, couples, students, young families, older families, and seniors, living in a diversity of multi- and single-unit rental and owned housing. This multigenerational and traditionally low-income community, many of whom are still here, is at risk of replacement and displacement with the city's plan. We need more housing types, but they should be incorporated into the community, not replace it. If you zone five-to-eight stories of expensive studios and one-bedroom units, these residents will be forced out. The types of homes that support them will be overrun by enormous corporate rental buildings and the multigenerational community broken up and lost. In this place, a monoculture of corporate warehousing for individuals and couples. So add four-to-six units per lot, yes. Add three-to-four-story apartment buildings and stacked flats, but don't be exclusionary and wipe out the people here who have built community and the housing that supports all stages of life. Please vote no to thirty-three.
Thank you so much. Now, we have number ninety. Awesome. Hello.
Hi. My name's Michelle. I live in Wallingford. Hi. My name's Michelle. I live in Wallingford. Amendment thirty-three and thirty-four, it feels like they came in at the eleventh hour. They propose sweeping up zones across eight neighborhoods without doing the due diligence. There is no community engagement, no environmental review has been done, and the evaluation to the compliance with the city's own standards. Councilmembers, I'd like to see the numbers. I'd like to see what has happened with the areas that have been developed. Has it helped with the affordability, or have we just created an upzone that is a scheme to enrich developers and corporate landlords? Thank you, and thank you for being up here and doing this very difficult.
Thank you so much. Now, we have number ninety-one through one-hundred, ninety-one through one-hundred. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. I'm Jennifer Danek, and I also live in Gasworks-Wallingford neighborhood. I'm here to urge you to vote no on Amendment thirty-four for many of the same reasons. We are now two years into an elaborate process to craft a comprehensive plan, and all of you have engaged your communities in some way or another to get community input and to balance that with housing goals and broader city needs. Now, you're tweaking and refining tiny boundaries, and at the same time, one of a hundred amendments, buried deep in the dead of summer, is being introduced without neighborhoods even knowing about it. That's not a way to govern and is going to have bad results. I will give you one detail, which is twice in that little neighborhood, my basement has flooded with sewage, toilet paper, as a result of the infrastructure in the sewers not being appropriate. The city tells me it is better to compensate me than to replace that local pipe. That's one example of how poor planning can result in ill-advised consequences.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have number ninety-two, ninety-three, and ninety-four. And we have two mics, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four.
Our neighborhood, Wallingford, has a plumbing system from the twenties, not these twenties. And it just takes a flushed baby wipe, a tampon, to cause a flood. And we have two streets that are sort of arterials. On those streets, two cars can pass each other without any friction, whereas everywhere else, it's a courteous game of waiting for the other person's turn, and then you kind of wave. We don't have infrastructure for massive apartment projects. And I guess that's all I wanted to say about the roads and the sewer system.
Thank you so much. All right, we have Megan, ninety-three, and then ninety-four, Iskra.
Hi there. I'm Megan Donnell, and I ask you to vote no on Amendment thirty-four. I grew up poor, and I want affordability, but I also want thoughtful urban planning, and that takes community engagement that you promised us. Millions of people are not moving here. We only need one-hundred-and-twenty-k affordable homes by twenty-four, forty-four, per the EIS, and we're not growing like we were. Affordability, yes. We already allow four homes per lot and multifamily housing. Eight stories is excessively overbearing in a neighborhood where there's these tiny Craftsman homes. Our current zoning is working. The most affordable units in my neighborhood are ADUs, DADUs, and old buildings converted to apartments. They are not new apartment complexes, which all have vacancies, I might add. I called them. We haven't gotten what this promises. New apartments have pushed out amenities and small businesses for expensive restaurants and grocery shops. We have a corner store. If things are upzoned, that's gone. Please, please, think about thoughtful planning, infrastructure, transportation, and the things we need for happy...
Thank you, Megan. Next, we have Iskra, followed by ninety-five, Patricia.
In the last fifteen years, Seattle added thirty percent of all its housing, and in that time, rents rose seventy-five percent. We are told always, density is the cure for affordable housing, but every upzone has resulted in higher land costs and higher housing costs. All over Seattle, affordable rentals are being torn down for expensive townhouses and million-dollar skinny homes. The cheapest low-income housing is housing you don't have to build. It's there. It's that rental house next door. Where is the equity in zoning that removes low-income renters and replaces them with the wealthy? To date, density in Seattle has been nothing but gentrification on steroids. The comp plan has no serious displacement plan. An existing low-income housing... Oh, anyway. Vote no on Amendments thirty-three and thirty-four, and the changes to transit that upzone the entire city, transit definitions. Take the time to create a plan that preserves existing affordable housing. Do it right. Improve city regulations and oversight of nonprofits, so affordable housing is sustainable and lasts for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine, and one-hundred, and we have both mics.
Hello. My name is Patricia, and I am a Wallingford resident, and I'm here to speak against Amendment thirty-four, thirty-three, and also the proposed LR-three rezoning of South Wallingford Avenue. So first of all, Amendment thirty-four, which really is an initial proposal to add the twenty-seven-block area of South Wallingford Urban Neighborhood as a neighborhood center, is unfair and exclusionary. The proposal, the aka Amendment thirty-four, was made known to the public only four weeks ago. Washington State law requires early and ongoing engagement with communities in shaping their comprehensive plans for growth. Amendment thirty-four proposes expansive changes to not only the Wallingford Urban Neighborhood, but a total of eight additional neighborhoods, all in a few weeks of a multi-year process, buried in one of a hundred amendments. This denies us the opportunity to contribute, as others have. This alone compromises the integrity of the entire One Seattle comprehensive plan. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Ninety-six, so Ryan, Rachel, Regan, Dimitri, and Jacob.
Hello. I'm a renter in D-six. I'm here to speak in support of increased density in housing. Specifically, I'm in support of Amendment seventy-six. We need to build housing near transit, removing parking requirements with number eighty-four. I also am in support of sixty-one to incentivize social housing. I'm also in support of thirty-four to increase the amount of neighborhood centers, so we have more housing in more diverse places, and in support of sixty-six as well, so we can have commercial anywhere in the city. And then I'm also very in support of forty-seven C, the Tangle Town adjustments. And I also am very opposed to one-oh-two. We do not need to add any extra groups to jump through for housing. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ryan. Ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and one-hundred.
Hi. My name is Rachel Levy. Please vote no on Amendments eighty-one and forty. Five years ago, my family built a backyard cottage in the Ravenna-Cowen Historical District to help our city solve its housing shortage. Free to make decisions that affected our budget and were our own aesthetics, we re-clad both the original and the cottage with a combination of historical and modern materials. Amendment eighty-one restricts property rights by limiting the type of siding in a historical district, inserting into city code covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are exclusionary and expensive. Vote down Amendment eighty-one for government overreach. This summer, a neighborhood favorite, the Ravenna-Var City diner, closed because it couldn't afford its lease. The mixing of homes and shops is one way we can better support small businesses and build livable communities. Amendment forty is a misguided attempt to maintain...
Thank you, Rachel. Ninety-nine, Regan, hopefully I said your name right, Dimitri, and then Jacob. Was I close?
That was right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Or ninety-nine?
No, ninety-eight. Ninety-eight, Regan?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Then Dimitri, you're next, Dimitri, and then Jacob.
Good afternoon. My name is Regan Midama. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Regan Midama, campaign manager for Erica Evans for City Attorney. The city attorney's role is not a legislative position. Its role in this space is to advise the council on legal issues, and where appropriate, provide feedback on what community members are saying about the direction of our city. I am here to urge the city council to think about how safe, affordable housing increases public safety for everyone. The concept is simple: The more people we get off the streets and the more people we prevent from becoming unhoused in the first place, the less people we will have who might become involved in the justice system in a way that is related to their housing situation. Housing provides economic stability. A stable address makes it easier to find a job, which reduces quality-of-life crimes in our city. The list of examples goes on, but I'll end it by saying that our city is growing, and housing must grow with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dimitri, followed by Jacob. Hey, Dimitri.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, city council. My name's Dimitri, and I'm a resident of White Center, so unincorporated King County, just a block south of the city. I was born and raised in Capitol Hill in the Central District, and I'm a social worker that works on behalf of families and young people experiencing homelessness. A lot of these families and the young people are experiencing homelessness and misavalized, and then pushed out of their communities and displaced from their networks of support, their schools, their jobs, and opportunities, and they're looking for a place of belonging. This is a regional issue. As the urban center of Washington State, what happens in Seattle affects our surrounding areas, and we know that rents, even in the rural and suburban areas around our city, are shooting up. And the difference is, many of these communities don't have the resources or the jobs or the services to ensure that these folks who have been anchored in Seattle but displaced can actually be successful and access opportunity. This is why we have a really important opportunity and responsibility to increase housing in our city of Seattle. The equation is simple: We're growing, and we need to accommodate that growth, particularly for Seattle neighborhoods who haven't had the equitable share of that development. So thank you. I appreciate your commitment to this work.
Thank you, Dimitri. Next, we have Jacob.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi. My name is Jacob Tuckel, and I'm a resident of the future Finney Ridge Neighborhood Center. I'd like to ask you to support Councilmember Strauss's Amendment forty-six C, to expand my center. Many of us in Finney Ridge are looking forward to welcoming new neighbors and businesses to our community. I'd also like you to support Amendments forty-two C and forty-nine C, expanding nearby neighborhoods of East Ballard and West Green Lake. Parks are all of our big backyards, and we should be maximizing housing alongside them. I'm happy to see amendments that support that. More broadly, I'd like you to support Councilmember Rink's Amendment thirty-four, to create additional neighborhood centers, and Councilmember Nelson's Amendment forty-nine, to encourage stacked flats, so more people can age in place. I don't know if any of you have had this problem, but my grandparents will not visit me because of all the stairs in my townhouse. So I know you all understand the gravity of this housing crisis, and Seattleites are showing that they are ready to help. Thank you, guys, so much.
Awesome. Thank you. So now, we're on deck for four, numbers one-oh-one to one-ten, one-oh-one to one-ten. And the first person is Curtis. You are number one-oh-one to one-ten. You are on deck, one-oh-one to one-ten. And we have two-hundred people signed up. It is five-ten. We still have till six-thirty. Come on down to City Hall and sign up, so you can give public comment about the comprehensive plan. Mr. Johnson, you are up, my friend.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here to speak on the Seattle Comprehensive Plan overall. People need both affordable housing and the environmental benefits that are provided by large, mature trees, and especially true at a time of climate change and increasing heat. The view pushed by developer interests is that we have to choose between housing and trees. This is false. It's aimed at setting housing advocates against people concerned about the environment. Developers aren't building to meet housing needs. They're building to generate the most profit possible. Twenty-twenty-four saw record housing built in this city, but the majority is luxury apartments. And a recent Seattle Times piece pointed out that in the 2010s, Seattle lost fourteen-thousand affordable units, fourteen-thousand units, as this housing increase happened. At the same time, we're losing our tree canopy, four thousand trees a year. Seattle must protect its largest mature trees and prioritize new housing.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, Curtis. One-oh-two, Joseph, followed by one-oh-three, Z. We have Joseph, one-oh-two. If we... No, we can't. We can just do jazz. There's no clapping. It's just jazz hands. That's why you're the only one clapping, because he didn't know. And then you ask, can we clap? No. Okay, one-oh-two, one-oh-two, Joseph? Going once, twice. Are you Joseph, one-oh-two?
Oh, yeah. Oh, me.
Yeah, you hit the jackpot. Come on.
Okay. Good morning, or good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Joseph, and I am speaking on behalf of the Duomo River Community Coalition for both bills. For context, DRCC, where I work, began to fight against injustices that Duomo Valley communities face. It includes more asthma hospitalizations, more displacement, more highways, less life expectancy, and one of the most polluted rivers in the nation. And I started with DRCC in South Park to manage an asthma program. So I knew I was going to deal with families that had asthma, but I did not know how much displacement would also be affecting these same children. And unfortunately, they're not choosing that displacement, but that's something that we're beginning to choose for them here in this room. And honestly, without more neighborhood centers, I'm not sure how more of these families can continue to live in Seattle. And without more of these neighborhood centers, I'm also not sure how we can prevent suburban sprawl, reduce vehicle emissions, miles traveled, increase ecological diversity, and reduce trees cut. How can we do this through Amendments ninety-one, ninety-four, and one-hundred and four? And I ask that we put these most impacted first as we're making these decisions.
Thank you, Joseph. Next, we have Z, one-oh-three. One-oh-four is not here, and then one-oh-five, David's on deck.
I'm here. My name is Z, and I am for growth with responsibility. Responsibility for our next generation, our grandchildren and great-great-grandchildren. What are we going to leave our next generation with? A concrete jungle? I'm for affordable housing. Does affordable housing mean just tiny, tiki-tacky without trees? Affordable housing also needs tree canopies. We have lost so many tree canopies. So many people have been traumatized by the sound of... By the sound of... What's the name? Change song. Chainsaw. Please, enough is enough. We need our next generation to have affordable housing and trees.
Thank you, Zee. All right. Number 105, David, you are next, followed by 106, Tom.
Hello, David and Bridgette Moring. We're architects in District 7. We're commenting both for the COM Plan and the permanent housing changes. We'd like you to support 93 and 102. 93 will provide the space needed for new trees, and 102 will provide requirement back to have architects like us look at alternatives before they take down trees. The COM Plan sets goals for housing and strives for 1,000 canopy acres to be provided in 13 years. That's additional 1,000 canopy acres. Only 93 and 102 are essential for keeping both the COM Plan goals of housing and reaching that canopy cover goal. Without 93, other tree incentives would probably not have enough space for those trees to survive. Portland's middle housing has exceeded 20% goals. 102 brings back smart design, and these 14 examples here show smart design that they had three to six houses plus trees.
Thank you, David. 106, Tom, followed by Rachel, 107.
Yes. Good afternoon, I'm Tom. I live in West Seattle. And I'm a resident of District 1, of course, and appreciate the council's continued attention to today's comments. I support Amendments 93 and 102 to prioritize tree protection in the city. They seem very reasonable and doable. And I've had extensive firsthand experience, you know, working with public works and planning, and have seen so many projects that protected trees when they are prioritized, but only when they're prioritized. In one project, we look at the initial design and ask the question, can we do the-- meet the goals and save six mature trees? We revisit it. The answer was yes, we could, and we did. So I urge the council to support Amendments 93 and 102 for responsible tree protection. And thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Next, we have 107, followed by 108, 109, and 110.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rachel. I am a homeowner and a working parent in the Wedgewood neighborhood in District 4, and I'm asking you to please allow more density in my neighborhood. Selfishly, I want to be able to walk to a grocery store. I want businesses to replace the pharmacy and the local florist that just closed. I want a bus line to take me to the light rail in under 30 minutes. I want my children to grow up around some of the diversity that makes our beautiful city. And the key to all of those is fitting more people in my neighborhood. And the key to doing that without clearcutting our trees is building housing that is tall and that is dense. So please add back the South Wedgewood Neighborhood Center and the other neighborhood centers, but that's mine. I wish they went farther north. Maintain the size of the other neighborhood centers in Northeast Seattle. Don't make them smaller. Please encourage density and encourage-- And offer flexibility in exchange for tree preservation and remove parking mandates. We owe it to the planet to prevent sprawl, and we owe it to our children to provide walkable, dense neighborhoods. And that requires flexible housing.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Joe, followed by Kobe, and then Vincent. Is Joe here? Joe would be number 108. 108. Okay, 108 is not here. 109, Kobe, followed by 110, Vincent. Is Kobe here? Kobe Allard, 109? Awesome. You are up, my friend. Yes. Yes. Kobe, Kobe, Kobe.
Hello, my name is Kobe Allard. I'm here to speak in favor of dense infill housing everywhere if possible. I moved to Seattle in 2003. My best friend and I shared an apartment for $400 a month. I checked Craigslist recently, and that place now rents for $1,300 a month. And it's not a nicer place, but we have such a severe housing shortage that they can charge that much more. Please make my crummy old apartment affordable again. Legalize the construction of so much housing in so much of the city that only a true chieftain like I was 20 years ago would bother to rent that place. Also, I ask you to support the amendments that unlock the development of stacked flats because that is the type of place that I want to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Kobe. And before we get to Vincent, let's get numbers one-- You're Vincent? Awesome, 110. Awesome. All right, come up to the mic. We're going to ask that numbers 111 and 120 that you all stand up and start getting ready. Just sit tight, Vincent, while they kind of move around, 111 through 120. And please know we have two mics. You can go to either or. We have two mics. We have our middle lane, then we have our outside lane. I prefer the outside lane because it's closer to the door. Middle lane, you got to be around people. I'm just playing. All right, middle lane. Vincent, go right ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vincent Rivera. I am a University of Washington student, and I live car-free in District 4. I support building more housing throughout the whole city, including the eight proposed neighborhood centers, along with allowing more small businesses in neighborhoods while protecting the environment by removing parking minimums citywide and continuing to invest in more transit, biking infrastructure, and pedestrian-oriented streets with plenty of trees and places that people can walk to. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. And number 111. 111, Laura? Awesome.
Thank you, council. My name is Laura Thorne. And we must address our housing and environmental crises together by protecting our tree, life-giving tree canopies. It's not either/or. Please vote for Amendments 93 and 102 and include protections for Tier 3 trees in 102. As we build housing, let's preserve and plant trees, giving oxygen, sheltering shade, drainage capture for less water pollution, and more birdsong for everyone everywhere in the city. And I support expanding housing that is truly affordable. However, the last-minute amendments that include in 33 and 34 creating a Gasworks Park Neighborhood Center with commercial rezoning and development up to eight stories was added only a month ago, and this neighborhood amendment mocks meaningful neighborhood engagement with no binding affordability and bypassing environmental reviews in an area that has very poor transit.
Thank you so much. Numbers 112, 113, and 114. 112, Kathy, followed by 113. Alan, you are on deck. You're on deck, right after Kathy.
Hi, thank you for showing up and doing all the hard work. Really appreciate it. I'm Kathy, District 7. I would like you to please pass Amendments 77, 89, 93, and please pass Amendment 102, fully supporting SDCI's authority to ask for alternate site designs and add protection of Tier 3 trees. Please reject Amendment 72. Please follow the Urban Forestry Commission's recommendations, including require 75% of amenity area be at ground level, restrict non-permeable services, add a requirement that trees be viable before, during, after construction to count for points, use higher incentives for tree retention versus new plantings. And to read what the lady before me said, chainsaws are traumatizing enough. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Alan, followed by Kathleen. Awesome.
My name is Alan Greenbaum from the Gasworks Neighborhood. I am opposed to Amendments 33 and 34 for the following reasons. One, these amendments were proposed during the dog days of summer when people are on vacation and not paying attention to local politics. Proposing these amendments one and one and a half months before voting on them does not give us, as a community, adequate time to organize and respond to these major changes. Two, I totally support building more affordable housing, but this upzoning has no guarantees for this. These amendments need binding affordability along with anti-displacement language. Otherwise, only the developers are going to benefit from this upzoning. Three, there's no environmental impact statement involving these amendments. This needs to include shoreline, stormwater-- --the impacts. Support Amendments 93 and 102. Finally, there is a need to improve traffic safety and increase transit in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Kathleen, 114, and Francesca, 115.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Berry Johnson. I have lived in Bryant in D4 since 1994. I own my own home, and I wouldn't be able to do that today. Today, I'm here on behalf of Historic South Downtown, a state-created organization in Pioneer Square and Chinatown International District. We are partners with you in planning for a vibrant future. Historic South Downtown asks that you remember that the one Seattle Comprehensive Plan is just that, one plan for an entire city. When one neighborhood gets to exclude proposed density, this unavoidably builds pressure on already-dense neighborhoods like Pioneer Square and CID and others to take on the housing and related infrastructure that we need. The SFH neighborhoods are rejecting density, and they talk about charm, when we see that as another potential failure of Seattle to address its extremely old housing crisis. Seattle is one city, and we ask our leaders to remember that every corner of the city-- --so that every corner of this city can contribute to the vibrancy and health of this community. As an elder human, I'd like to remind you that these decisions are not for gray hairs like me. They are for all--
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. 115, and then followed by that is Michael. Francesca, good to see you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Francesca Iluhu, and I live in District 2 and work in District 3 as a local artist and community organizer. I implore you all to respect the neighborhood boundaries of historically redlined neighborhoods. The proposed neighborhood centers that shift the historical boundaries of the Central District minimize the legacy of the residents who have lived there. Black residents of the CD have already endured decades of housing discrimination, redlining, gentrification, and displacement. To carve out pieces of the CD and relabel it as Cap Hill or Druckins Park would be effective erasure of all the community the black community has built and endured. The CD and CID have already absorbed their fair share of Seattle's housing density. We need the rest of the city to take on more density and give our communities time to stabilize. Vote no to Amendment 32. Crime is but a byproduct of a scarcity of public resources. Amendment 32 will lead to more overpolicing of black and brown bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca. All right, now we're at 116, 117, 118, 119, and 120. And we have two mics. Awesome. You're Michael. And then I'm assuming you are Jesse. Awesome. All right, you can come to the mic. Michael, floor is yours.
Hello. For those of you who know my partner, Kayden, they are working here and would not want to miss a Comprehensive Plan meeting, so I am here to give my voice for the first time. I moved to Seattle six years ago, excited to enjoy the environmental and social climates of this wonderful city. I have been a renter and lived in three different rental apartments in District 5. I took-- I look for areas that have access to transit, grocery stores, restaurants, biking and walking infrastructure, and I hope to see more neighborhoods develop to offer these. I also hope to continue to be able to afford the privilege of looking at studios to rent for me and my kiddies in the Seattle housing market as we face a housing shortage. I encourage you to adopt Amendment 34 and others that support more housing and neighborhood centers to build more communities where people want to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Jesse, followed by 118, 119, and 120.
Jesse, born and raised in Seattle area. Support 93 and 102. Seattle and Washington is one of the most progressive cities and states. We should follow Boston, Portland, New York tree ordinance. Left-wingers care about stopping global warming animals, going extinct, protecting beautiful, spiritual, and culturally important trees. We are the Evergreen State. Irreversible carbon tipping point in 2030. 75% of all plant and animal species may be extinct as soon as 2200, one study shows. Get your priorities straight. Look up the web of life and how all animal species are connected, and them going extinct will be catastrophic to the planet, like bees, plankton, and trees. Just locally, the trees are necessary for our beloved orcas, salmon, and eagles. Let me remind everyone that humans are animals, and without plants, fungus, and other animals, we would not survive. A lot of right-wingers won't stop until the whole planet is an ugly, toxic parking lot, until all of our public lands are sold off to corporations. 95% blacktop is outrageous. Trees prevent soil erosion, drought, flooding, pollution. Capture carbon, provide shade. The solutions are progressive ones like rent control, not--
Thank you, Jesse. I'm sorry. You can send your comments to us as well, to our email, all right? Thank you. 118, 119, and 120. 118? 119? Is there 118? 118 is-- I can't read this. Sabonian? No? Okay, 118. And then you must be Laura? Awesome. And then Samuel's number 120. Awesome. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Laura Gardner. My husband and I own a home in West Seattle near the Admiral and Alaska Junction Neighborhood Centers. I support expanding West Seattle Neighborhood Centers, and I support an Alki Neighborhood Center. I can walk less than a mile to seven grocery stores, and I run into people I know, sidewalk cats, feral children, fruiting and flowering street trees. We can make most of our needs by foot. We can meet most of our needs by foot, and my life is more vibrant and healthier because of it. Establishing an Alki Neighborhood Center would be the first step towards being able to support a grocery store. It would be the first step towards more transit to ease the congestion from visitors currently only able to get there by car and better connectivity for neighbors to get places further away. These options help young, elderly, and disabled neighbors have autonomy and agency. Neighborhood centers are an opportunity, not a threat. They support small businesses and help build relationships. It is a moral necessity to accommodate more neighbors across our entire city, and our communities will be stronger because of it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And Samuel, before you go, I need number-- before you do your public comment. Numbers 121 to 130. 121 to 130. If you could start getting ready in the queue. And we have two microphones. If you can line up at two places, that would be super helpful so we can continue to move along. 121 and 130, you are next. And the 121 is Adam. Adam is first up for 120. My guy, Adam. All right, awesome. Samuel, floor is yours.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Sam. I grew up in Roosevelt. I attended U-Dub, and I've also lived in the U District in Ballard, and I live in Capitol Hill. And I'm on the nonprofit Sustainable Capitol Hill Board as well. And I love the vibrancy, the density, and the accessibility in Capitol Hill. Not only does this help weave the social fabric of our city, it also helps the environment by reducing sprawl and pollution from tailpipe emissions, tire dust, and noise. But our current housing restrictions severely limit the number of people that can benefit from this. I support creating and expanding neighborhood centers, permitting more types of dense housing everywhere, and I implore you to adopt all the proposed amendments that make this plan bolder. Expanding mixed-use dense zoning along transit corridors and inside of neighborhood corridors to give more convenient options for shopping, support small businesses, and make it easier to make friends. Allow for stacked flats, broaden the definition of frequent transit. Further expand neighborhood centers, especially in the-- Off-street parking minimums. Our lack of affordable housing prices out our neighbors and friends, especially those who are in the most vulnerable positions like seniors and those without savings.
Thank you, Samuel. Next, we have Adam, followed by Julia, 121 to 122. Hello.
Hi, council. Well, thank you so much for making this session possible. My name is Adam Brown. I live in Wallingford. I moved here from Texas about four years ago, and I've loved living in Seattle. But I would love to share a little bit of my opinion about this. So first of all, I believe that the storage of private vehicles in most places in our city is making the city worse. So there are seven amendments about parking in this, 7, 84, and 86 that I do support. I also support Amendments 34 and 33 about affordable housing. I love Member Strauss's addition for Tangle Town's enlargement of that center. It's amazing. And I also support 65, 66, and 67 regarding corner stores and commercial uses. And finally, I also appreciate the addition of 89 and 90 about stacked flats. These will make our city even more welcoming and welcome even more people to Seattle to make our city even better. Moved here from Texas to escape some of the problems of that state, which I think are obvious here, and I've just loved it, and I want to make this city even better. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we have Julia, followed by William.
Hi, Julia here in support of 93 and 102 amendments. I'm born and raised here. My grandparents-- both my grandfathers came here and were architects for the city and developers. Mr. Morris, my grandfather, founded Hilltop Community, and they had an integrated plan to incorporate the buildings and the trees together so that development was a community process. I brought a picture of the tree that blessed my Seattle home. It's still there. The house is gone. It was just lucky that that's the case. But for mental health, for physical health, and for trees as proponents of civic life in a city. Trees help us be human, and we need to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have 123, 124, William. 123? Is William here, 123? Once, twice, William? Once, twice, William, 123? All right, 124? Awesome.
Hello, council members. My name is Lynn Prunhuber. I live in Wallingford. I'm hearing support both for affordable housing and for neighborhood centers. The problem with neighborhood centers is, look at the maps. They're not centers. When...if it were limited to centers... Let's take Wallingford as an example. All of Lower Wallingford is not a center. That's the gasworks issue that some other speakers talked about. What's the Wallingford Center is 45th Street, say, from I-5 to maybe Stone Way. But what...so what needs to happen is the center needs to be defined more precisely. And then also, what you want needs to be defined more precisely because, as is...
Thank you. I don't mean to cut you off. That's the time. I'm sorry. Understood. Sorry. You can send your comments in to us, though, please. And then I... Absolutely. You can type that up and send it to our emails. Thank you. Appreciate you. Next, we have Jake, and then followed by Jim, number 26. 126.
Hello, my name is Jake Santelli. I co-own Harry's Fine Foods on Capitol Hill and Harry's Beach House on Alki. They're both small neighborhood restaurants with a very strong community focus. We are in support of Amendment 65, but we urge a small change to exempt kitchen and back-of-house space from the 2,500-square-foot limit. Without this exemption, it will be nearly impossible for a restaurant to stay financially viable. Our kitchen and prep areas require substantial space, and we still need enough seats to make the business work. We have shared suggested language with your offices, and we hope that the clarification will be included in the final package. Thank you for supporting neighborhood businesses like ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Jim Gold, 126. Gold, and then 127, Sarah. Hi, Jim.
Thank you, council members, for your selfless public service. I'm Jim Gold, District 2, and I'm here speaking in support of Amendments 93 and 102. My neighbor has several big trees in her yard, including a dogwood that hangs about 10 feet over my roof and drops a lot of litter and clogs the gutters. A couple of years ago, she had someone prune them, but he didn't remove the branches overhanging my roof. When I asked if he could remove some of them, he said he already removed what he could without harming the tree. I understood and accepted that explanation, realizing that Seattleites generally are environmentally conscious and love trees. What I don't understand is why we have ordinance that prohibit this but allow developers to remove entire trees that are not doing any harm. I'm all for affordable housing, but let's do it right in a way that honors the health of the environment, people, and our...
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have 127, followed by 128, 129, and 130. That's Sarah, Jenny, Megan, Bonnie.
Okay, is that good?
Yes.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thanks. Getting tired. I live in the proposed Gasworks Neighborhood Center in stacked housing, actually, in an old triplex. I'm a public school teacher of civics and history. I know we have a lot of work to do to unravel a century of racist zoning and housing policy. I would like to see Seattle protect already-existent older affordable housing and develop new affordable multiplexes for density. But I am concerned that the recent sudden addition of eight neighborhood zones was created with very limited time for community engagement and will result in chaotic unintended problems. I urge you, actually, to vote no on Amendments 34 and 33. I think each community deserves the time and space to help come up with specific solutions that help problem-solve for each unique neighborhood. A few that come to mind specifically for Gasworks, an ancient sewage system regularly on overload and backup, extreme heat on a south-facing slope, protecting the tree canopy we've worked hard to restore in the last three decades, and really tiny streets. Solutions are out there, but we deserve to be a part of the problem-solving process, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny, Megan, and Bonnie. 128, 129, 130. Jenny, Megan, Bonnie.
Okay, I love this poster because I believe in this for all of Seattle and all of Washington State, and I could extend that to probably all of our states. My name is Jenny Ringprez. I'm from Washington. I love this city. I've lived in a lot of the neighborhoods. I've been a renter. I had an apartment studio, $300 on First Hill. That building's still standing. I don't know how much longer. That helped me get through college. So I'm really, really conscious of so many of the testimonies here today. I am asking you to vote no on 34 and on 33 because of the lateness of adding those neighborhoods. But I'm also in a neighborhood that's full of kids and families, and I'm asking you to ensure that any new developers and any new buildings include affordable housing units in those buildings. If we want diversity in our neighborhoods, that is the only way it's going to happen. Wallingford, Tangle Town, Green Lake, everything north is going to be developed with luxury housing, and people really need to under...
Thank you, Jenny. Next, we have Megan, 129, and then 130, Bonnie.
I am here...Hi, everybody. Good to see you. I'm here to ask you to pass Amendments 93 and 102 and to please add Tier 3 trees to 102. We have really lost enough to date. We need protection. We've had none for at least some of our remaining signature trees in Seattle that support our health and well-being. Truth be told, many trees have been removed in situations where they had zero impact on the developer's preferred design, and we've been told that. One developer said, "This is Seattle. We can do anything we want." And that's the case. We need to change that. So you have a great opportunity. And I...oh, man. Okay, check these out fast. These are four trees standing. This is five feet in diameter. In the Greenwood area, there are three more.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. All right, next we... That goes on in public comment. Pass 102. Damn! Okay, Bonnie, you're up next, so that's 130. 131 between 140, you are next. 131 to 140. 131 to 140, you are next. Rise, my friends. You all are next. 131 to 140. Bonnie, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about Amendment 34. I'm a Wallingford resident. I'm also president of Wallingford Community Council. And we have written a letter to council August 15, I think the letter says. I'm going to drop it off for you. It's about the background in that we've had no public outreach on Amendment 34. It came up. I was reading the amendments. That was the first time I saw a map for Gasworks Park, and it's the first time seven other neighborhoods had a chance to look at their maps. The 30 neighborhoods that were considered when the mayor's plan was released was in October 2024. We have really tried to follow the comprehensive plan closely. We've had meetings on it. We've had OPCD. D4 person there. So I can't support this. This is not the way to do business. You have to have outreach. Our neighborhood has been denied...
Thank you, Bonnie. Next, we have Richard, 131, followed by Chris, 132. Is Richard here, 131? Richard? Richard Farr? No? All right. Chris, 132? Is Chris here? Yes, 132. And then 133, Adam Bartel? If you could start lining up, that would be amazing. 132?
Hi, I'm Chris, and I live in District 6, Tangle Town. Tangle Town does not really fit the definition of a neighborhood center. It's too small. It has just a few businesses, no grocery stores, and all of the central things that a neighborhood center should have. We also have one bus, which meanders through the neighborhood down very narrow streets. And the way that the upzone has been defined is to go on either side of the bus route, which meanders through Tangle Town, and so it's consumed an excessive amount of housing. So an alternative, still honoring the density, which a lot of people have been talking about lately, is to move it over to Leitona, which is a major arterial that runs in a straight line from 50th to 65th, and then it ties in with light rail. And it's very close to grocery stores in PCC, Whole Foods. So that would be a very natural way to get...
Thank you, Chris. All right, next, we have 133, Adam. Awesome. Following Adam is David, 134. Is David here, 134? Awesome. Okay. Go ahead, Adam.
Hi, my name is Adam Bartel. I live in West Seattle, and I am commenting on the Comprehensive Plan. Seattle has a housing crisis and a homelessness crisis. The only way to seriously address either is to build more housing, full stop. That is not going to happen if we don't allow for higher density across the city. Putting all the apartments along busy arterials forces poor people to breathe in exhaust and brake dust. The rich people, who are able to own homes away from the arterials and busy streets, don't have this problem. It is inequitable to allow density only on the busy streets. We must allow denser housing on any street in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we have David. And just a quick time check. It is 5:45. The sign-up is going to stay open until 6:30, so we have 45 minutes, 45 minutes for sign-up. All yours, David.
Good evening. My name is Dave Glouger, and I'm a resident of District 5. I ask you to please protect Seattle large trees by passing Amendments 93 and 102 and including Tier 3 trees. If you have any doubt about voting for these amendments, then read this story that was published by Investigate West two days ago. It highlights that 73 trees were cut down every week in August on properties under construction. That's SDCI data. SDCI tried to minimize this by stating that 90% of those trees were less than 24 inches in diameter. My analysis shows that the other 10... That these 10% other trees, the Tier 2 trees, account for 51% of the lost canopy. Including Tier 3 trees, it accounts for 93% of the lost canopies. These trees are important, and they reap the benefits of them now. Climate change is upon us. Vote for 93 and 102. Thank you, and I'm leaving the newspaper article.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next...that was...wait, what number? Oh, sorry. Okay, 135 and 136. My bad.
I'm 135. My name is Terrenard. I'm asking for more bonuses for affordable and social and sustainable housing. Wild, bold things are happening in our nation, and so much of it is putting the wants of the wealthy before the needs of the poor. Be boldly different. Seattle's facing a genuine affordable housing crisis. It's so expensive, the HUD low-income limit for Seattle is almost $85,000. I'd understand if you don't know what that means because you guys make north of $140,000. So let me remind you what it means to not be able to afford your home. It's two jobs or late nights or sacrificed passions. It is stress and struggle, necessary hardships, and reckless hope. We need leadership that can be bold on behalf of the burden, that considers those that don't have time to lobby because they're busy surviving and providing. We might see this...you might see this current comp plan as a fair appeasement of multiple different agendas on a topic that's very hard to comprehend. But affording your home versus preserving the value of a neighborhood or protecting a traffic commute are not the same thing.
Thank you so much. And next, we have Whitney, 136, followed by Nathan, 137. Is Whitney here, 136? Whitney Nakamura? No? Okay. Nathan, 137?
Hi, I'm Nathan. I'm a volunteer with Soapbox Seattle and a chapter co-leader for Citizens Climate Lobby, and I'm here about the comp plan. I spent the past four years in a shared house living with friends in Wallingford in District 4. There have been a lot of people here from Wallingford talking about how narrow the streets are, and that's true. But I never had a car, and it's really easy to get around on a bike and in buses through there, so I don't think that's such a big problem. But this year, our landlord raised the rent 9%. I'm a tech worker. I can afford the higher rent, but my friends can't. And so this raised rent sort of broke our little community and displaced us all. A neighborhood center in Gasworks might be able to stop that story from repeating itself, so I'm in favor of Amendment 34, as well as other amendments that encourage building up instead of out, such as stacked flats, Amendments 89 and 91, and Transit Oriented Development, Amendments 76, 84, and 86. Council members, please help keep Seattle affordable to people other than just tech workers.
Thank you, Nathan. Next, we have 138, Megan, followed by William, 139, and then 140. You can pull the mic down, too, whichever's comfortable. Easy.
Hello, my name is Megan Long, and I'm a renter in West Seattle. And I am in favor of the addition of affordable housing and neighborhood centers. The area in particular where I live, I have access to grocery stores, restaurants, The area in particular where I live, I have access to grocery stores, restaurants, basically anything that any person needs transit. And I feel like more neighborhoods could use that, literally anywhere. It's good for accessibility reasons. It's not perfect. Apartment prices in the area where I live are like only increasing, and we need to keep up with the demand for housing. Luxury apartments are not a solution. And I fear a day where I will not be able to afford where I live, and I work above minimum wage at a nine-to-five job, like a lot of other people. And I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Megan. 139 and then 140. William.
Hi, I'm Bill Alvis from Leshai, and I want to thank the council for hosting this grueling event. I support Amendments 93 and 102, along with incentives for stacked flats and shared walls, as essential to maintaining our robust tree cover while we increase density. But, to ensure your legislation makes a difference, please consider being more vigilant regarding the executive's implementation and enforcement. And here's a short horror story. Our neighborhood watched as a logging crew arrived early on a Sunday morning with license plate obscured, and cut down and hauled away a magnificent red cedar tree, protected by a city-erected fence, on a lot with a clearly posted stop-work order. As a repeat tree-violence offender, the developer could have gone to jail. Instead, he paid the city a paltry fine, built a $4 million house where the tree once stood, and went to the bank with the profits. I think the city is sending the wrong message to those who would profit at the expense of our trees.
Thank you, Bill. Number 140? Is number 140 here? Awesome. And then if numbers 141 to 150, if you start standing up, numbers 141 to 150. Is 140, did 141 and 150 all leave? No? 141 to 150? I will call out those names. One second. Go ahead, 140. Okay, 140. Go ahead and start.
Hi, I'm Beth Scott. I'm in D2. And first, I want to say I'm here in support of Amendments 93 and 102, to protect trees and tree canopy. While I'm also a huge affordable housing supporter, I feel like, first I was going to say, I'm not confident that developers really care about the trees so much, maybe even affordable housing as much as profit. So I'm quite concerned that if there aren't very clear standards about trees, they won't care about them. I can say, within probably three blocks of my house, there have been very recent, I'm going to say incidents, that's not really an incident, but there were five trees on a big lot, not talking little skinny trees, I'm talking about big, probably 100-year-or-more old trees. Two different lots, five big trees, back of the lot could have been worked around, I believe, and they just got cut down. And I do know, well, anyway. 93 and 102, please vote yes for that, as well as affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And numbers 141 to 150, we only have even, that's why no one stood up. So we have 142, 144, 146, 148, 150, 152, and 154. So it's all even. And you are Kirsten?
I'm Kirsten.
Kirsten, Lovejoy.
Correct.
That was my friend's, my best friend's high school's last name. Awesome. So you're good people, to me. Already?
We try to be, yeah.
All right.
We try to be. Thank you. My name is Kirsten Lovejoy, and I'm a resident of the Alki neighborhood. I've owned and lived in my home for 22 years. Seen and supported a lot of change, not opposed to progressive change and growth, but strongly opposed to the lack of due process that has occurred in our community. The One Seattle Plan's public engagement summary clearly spells out a detailed four-phase process that was supposed to take place for each community, as mandated in the Washington Growth Management Act. First phase, listen and learn to educate and engage the community, did not happen for Alki. Second phase, shape the plan for environmental analysis and community conversation, also did not happen. Third phase, refine the plan, presentation and community analysis of draft plan, did not happen for Alki. Fourth phase, zoning update engagement with formal comment period for public input, did not happen for Alki. The Alki community was given zero opportunity to participate in this four-phase process, tussing Alki and eight other communities into the plan via Amendment 34, is irresponsible, dismissive to our communities.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirsten. Thank you, Kirsten. Next we have Robert, number 144. Is Robert here, 144? Okay, 146, Jessica. 146, Jessica. 148, Lily? Is that Jessica standing up? I know that's you, Lily. Is that Jessica who's standing up?
No.
No. Okay, Lily. 148.
Sounds good. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. My name is Lily Hayward, speaking on behalf of the 2,500 members of the Seattle Metro Chamber of Commerce. First, we really want to thank you, Chair Hollingsworth, for leading a very smooth and transparent process, and keeping things light up here, too. I always laugh at your jokes. And to all of you for considering or proposing the pro-housing amendments that we see before us, and to the mayor and his team and at OPCD for introducing a strong and bold comprehensive plan. Affordability and housing are top priorities for the business community, because when people cannot afford to live close to where they work, employers from coffee shops to our largest businesses struggle to attract and retain workers. So that's why we want to encourage you today to be bold in this comprehensive plan, and adopt amendments that will build the types of housing we need to be more feasible and affordable. Thank you for those of you who have put forth those amendments, and especially Council President Nelson, for working with the housing community and introducing amendments that make stacked flats and affordable unit production more feasible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lily. And 150, followed by 152 and 154. 150, followed by 152 and 154.
Good evening. I am Mike. I urge you to adopt Amendments 89, 93, and 102, all regarding space for trees. I have lived in Wallingford on 46th Street for 29 years. I have witnessed what happens when the Master Builders Association gets involved in city planning. Mayor Murray and the MBA were going to bring affordable housing to my neighborhood through the Hala. It resulted in new affordable housing, if you could buy a townhouse for 3/4 of a million dollars. The master builders think short-term and expediency. I'm urging you, council members, to think long-term in the community's welfare. Trees are with us through all seasons. They never stop giving to the well-being of our city. Trees have no profit motive, they seek no loopholes. People can live on the second, third, or fifth floor of a building. Canopy trees can only live on the ground floor. Do not deprive Seattle of this asset. Leave space for trees.
Thank you, Mike. Next we have 152 and 154. 152, Dale. Then 154.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Dale Alakelp. I'm a resident of South Seattle, District 2, addressing amendments to the proposed comp plan. We can protect our tree canopy and conserve and build affordable housing. It is not an either-or. The denser we become, the more trees we need. Seattle has removed over 4,000 trees in the past two years. We are fifth in the nation for urban heat islands. As climate change continues to accelerate, we must conserve our tree canopy to lower temperatures and to help cleanse our air. So please, vote yes on Amendments 93 and 102. Please add tier-three trees to Amendment 102. These reasonable amendments do not stop development, they make it better.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Dale. All right, we're at 154. Before you start, is it Rye?
Dwi.
Dwi, I'm sorry. That was so off. Okay, Dwi, my bad. Dwi, okay, so numbers 161 to 170. 161 to 170. First person up in that group is May, followed by Colin. 161 to 170. We have 30 minutes more. If you're looking on TV, you have 30 minutes more for you to come down and sign up for the window. Dee, floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dwi, and I own a home in the U District, a small, single-family home. And I want more density in my neighborhood. So yes, to stacked flat bonus, yes to anything that can incentivize affordable housing, and for folks who are making 40% to 80% of AMI to our neighborhood. When our neighbors, when my neighbors are paying less rent for their housing, that means more money that they can spend in our local businesses, which in the U District are probably little boba tea shops dotted all around our neighborhood. If we're able to spend more money in our local businesses, then that means that these neighbors, there are fewer vacant storefronts, our neighborhoods are more vibrant, and it feels safer and more vibrant as folks are living in the neighborhood. I also support amendment to increase the amount of parks in regional centers, because we want to be able to have those green spaces in a really dense neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwi. 161 to 170. You are up. First person is May?
Max.
Max. Oh, my bad.
Hi, I'm Max, and I live next to a Maple Leaf supergrove of over a dozen large interconnected trees. But the center of this grove is currently planned to be cut out for high-end, single-family housing. They will, you know, freely clearcut all the trees for just a few more million-dollar homes. This is not a solution for density nor affordability. The current designation of tree tiers is completely toothless. No matter the size nor the species, if they take up any significant space, you can legally pave everything. Seattle needs stricter and forcible rules from our representatives to preserve what we have left. We can't give up trees in the name of density. Please support Amendments 93 and 102, protect our trees and increase the density. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Next we have Colin, Kyler, and then Amy. 162, 63, 64.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you and city staff for running a thorough public engagement process that has extended for multiple years. My name is Colin McDonald. I'm a homeowner in District 3, and I work just a few blocks from here. I get around primarily on foot, and I love that I constantly run into my friends in my neighborhood. I can't afford a house, but buying a condo allowed me to put down roots and to commit to Seattle. I encourage you to support amendments that will encourage walkable neighborhoods with diverse housing stock, where families at all income levels can thrive for generations. That means voting yes on Amendment 34 to add and expand neighborhood centers, yes on 61 to listen to voters and back social housing, yes on 78 to build family rentals near schools, 84 to eliminate parking requirements, and 89 to expand density bonuses. Allowing density will not mandate it. The comprehensive plan will not cause six-story buildings to spring up from every bit of the city, but we can't contain growth to a few limited neighborhoods. And I encourage you to support amendments that allow sustainable growth everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you so much. 163, Kyler, followed by 164.
Well, thanks to Tyler for handing me his. Hi, I'm Sherilyn Crowther. I'm a homeowner in Wedgewood, and I support density in D4. Several of you have gotten funny postcards from me that I wanted you to know that I, in D4, support density. Tall buildings, stacked flats, shared walls, corner stores, and neighborhood centers. Smart density. I want a neighborhood that can support my vision of my son's life ahead. My son has disabilities. He's got a lot of strengths, but one of them is not living independently. He wants, I want him to be able to live, work, and socialize close to home. D4, adding in the neighborhood center to South Wedgewood, not adding in, restoring. It restores it back to the plan. That's going to help him. That brings jobs. He might be able to find work. That brings opportunities for him to travel, walk, use the bus. Maybe we could get actually transit that takes us from Wedgewood to the train station on the weekend. Yep. I rode a lot, and then I just riffed. We've got to have density. This city's got to grow. It's that simple.
Thank you, Kyler. Next we have 164, followed by 165.
Great. Hi, my name is Amy Bailey. I'm a resident of District 4, homeowner and former landlord. I oppose Amendments 39, 40, 41, and 102. I support all amendments for affordable housing requirements, stacked flats, and the removal of parking requirements. I also enthusiastically support Amendment 34, which includes my own block as a part of a neighborhood center. I want more density, more affordability for me and for my neighbors. And let me tell you why. Of course, we need housing in general, but as you know, our neighborhood in particular is friendly and tight-knit, and we know our neighbors. There are multiple households in our immediate vicinity who rent but would love to buy. Many are long-term renters and native Seattleites. We need more density and affordable options to keep our neighborhood intact. I've heard a lot of people today speak of preserving our neighborhood's character, and I ask, what is more central to that character than its people? It's not houses, it's not trees, it's our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Luca, Keith, Scott, Shirley. You are up.
Hello, council.
And if you want to, if you want to use the, yeah, yeah.
Taller one?
Yeah. You're good. And make sure you talk into the mic. Thank you, Luca.
Okay. Hello, council. I'm a UW Urban Planning student, and I'm here today to support Amendments 36, excuse me, 63, 61, and 17 to support social housing, as well as most amendments proposed by Council Member Strauss. Thank you. And Council Member Rink, thank you. For, as a student, all students are rent, most students are rent-burdened in Seattle, and the efforts that U2 have undertaken have, are going to really reduce costs and make it easier for students to stay in Seattle, and maybe even remain in Seattle after they graduate. I would also like to address Council Member Rivera, who is absent unfortunately, but the UW is in her district. It's her responsibility to represent students, but many of the amendments that she proposes are going to actually increase the cost of housing and make it harder to build. And it's just going to end up burdening students more, and I hope she feels at least a little bit of shame for the pain that she's going to cause to future students at UW like me.
Thank you, Luca. And just for the record, we do have Council Member Rivera and Council Member Juarez. They're online. They're just online. Yeah, yeah, you're all good. And get a 4.0 in school at UW. Thank you. All right, 166. Keith?
Hi, my name's Keith. I've lived in this region my whole life, and I have lived in Seattle proper for the last 18 years. I choose to live in Seattle because I want to live in a walkable, dense neighborhood where I can get around with active transportation. And I think we should make that option available for as many people as we can. I was really lucky. I was able to buy my home, and I actually have a parking spot that I didn't particularly want and don't need. I think requiring people to have parking is going to make housing more expensive, and it's going to make it so less people will have the option of having an easy and affordable way of transit, like I do. It seems like a lot of people are concerned about parking and congestion. I think making walkable options available to more people by increasing density will, is the best way of addressing that. I support all of the amendments that will increase walkability and density, and particularly eliminating parking requirements and expanding neighborhood centers.
Awesome. Thank you, Keith. Now we have Scott, Shirley, Alex Harper, 167 to 170.
Hello, council. My name is Scott Berkeley. I'm a West Seattle resident and a homeowner with a very large tree in my backyard. This council has heard quite a bit about how both trees and housing are important, but they are sometimes, unfortunately, in conflict. I'd like to thank Council President Nelson for introducing the Green Stacked Flat Bonus, Amendment number 91, that will make it easier for us to keep our city green as we grow. Let's reward home builders that keep trees or provide copious green space with the option to provide desperately needed homes. The Green Stacked Flat Bonus will be greatly enhanced by also passing Amendment number 7 to eliminate arbitrary parking requirements, so that the government stops forcing us to pave over our trees and our gardens. And Council Member Saka, we all know, or at least the two of us know, West Seattle's the best Seattle. Let's make it even better with an Alki neighborhood center. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Scott. Next we have Shirley, 168. Alex, 169. Harper, 170. Is Shirley here? 168? Is 168 here? That should be Shirley. No? Okay, 169. Alex, you here? Awesome. And then Harper, you 170? Awesome. Harper, go ahead and come up to the mic. And Alex, floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Alex McOviak. I live and work in Wedgewood, District 4, as a landscaper and gardener. I already have five roommates, and they're talking about a recession. I grew up, I also grew up in Linwood next to hydroelectric roadways, and me and my little sister both have chronic respiratory illness from, associated with smog and road debris. Green space buffers between roadways and walkways is the cheapest solution for that kind of problem. I support Amendments 61, 84, 93, and 102. Thank you very much. Take care.
Awesome. Thank you, Alex. Next, okay, before you go, Harper, numbers 171 to 180. 171 to 180, that is Tim, that is Joan, that is Charlotte, that is Charlie, that is Marty, that is David, that is Julie. You all are numbers 171 to 180. And Harper, the floor is yours.
I'm a renter in District 3, and I wanted to speak on behalf of more housing density. People who cry about potentially having to live next to a five-to-six-story building are trying to decide who can and cannot live near them. The fact that this sentiment persists unchallenged in polite society is unacceptable. It is time to change that. It is time to stop letting wealthy Seattleites say no to change. It is time to stop letting wealthy Seattleites pull up the ladder lest we become San Francisco. Seattle will not be inequitable or fair, will not be equitable or fair until all people, regardless of income, have the same freedom to choose where they live, to choose where in Seattle they wish to live, as those with money. For all the old people here so concerned about the health of the next generation, we are here in the room. Stop using us to shield your selfishness and listen to us.
Thank you, Harper. Next we have Tim, number 171. You're Tim, and then followed by Joan is 172. Is Joan here, 172? All right, then followed, it's going to be 176, because the other numbers are crossed out, so 176 is up. Awesome.
Hello, council members. I'm Tim Jokel, here to speak about Seattle's One Comprehensive Plan. I'm lucky enough to be a homeowner in Royal Heights, and I'm asking you to pass all of the amendments that increase density and the additional neighborhoods. In my situation, we're currently not able to build a multifamily stacked flat that would be able to provide separate housing for myself, my wife, my older handicapped sister, my aging father, and my son. So please pass Amendment 89 and 91 for greener stacked flats, stacked flats citywide. Please pass Amendment 34 for more neighborhood centers, including Royal Heights where I live, and Amendment 42 for East Ballard. Please pass Amendments 35 to increase the number of places where new housings would go. Please pass Amendment 7 to eliminate parking mandates citywide. And please pass Amendment 66 to legalize corner stores on all sides. And please pass Amendment 66 to legalize corner stores on all sides. Thank you. And we appreciate all of the work that you council members have done. I know it's not easy. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we have Joan, 172. Is Joan here? 172. All right. We're going to 176, Charlotte. Awesome, Charlotte. And then followed by 177, Charlie. Is Charlie here? All right. Yes, 177? You're 177? Awesome. All right, go ahead. 176.
Hi all. I'm a, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm a resident of Lower Wallingford, and I'm asking you to vote no on Amendments 33 and 34. The Gas Works Amendment was introduced five weeks ago by Councilmember Rink at the 11th hour with no due diligence. There has been no community engagement with Lower Wallingford, no environmental review, no infrastructure assessment. I'm concerned that the consequences will benefit developers who aren't held accountable, enrich developers who have no stake in our community. Developers already build luxury units that are above market price. Currently, there are brand-new empty housing units in our neighborhood because it's not affordable. I am concerned that the consequences of a community center will displace multigenerational housing, particularly seniors and fixed incomes, and displace longstanding tenants with low incomes. This amendment will enrich developers who have no stake in our community. There are solutions. Allow community input. Do not sneak in this Gas Works Amendment.
Thank you. We have Charlie, 177. And just a time check, we have 17 minutes before the sign-up sheet closes. 17 minutes. Go ahead, Charlie.
Actually, my name is Jessica Dixon, and I...
Are you number one?
Charlie came a little earlier.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm 177.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. My name is Jessica Dixon. I'm a resident of District 6. I want to thank Councilmembers Strauss, Kettle, Nelson, and Rivera for submitting amendments to Council Bill 12993 to try and fix our current tree code, which I think we all agree is not protecting Seattle's remaining trees. Tree Action Seattle has estimated that there have been over 500, 4,500 mature trees lost in our city in just two years, or about 345 trees lost every month. And that's why we're urging you to vote yes on Amendment 93, which incentivizes developers to preserve trees on site and create space for more, and vote yes on Amendment 102, which closes loopholes and brings Seattle up to national standards, and please include protections for Tier 3 trees as well. We're truly at a crossroads, and you will determine which path the city chooses, maximizing pavement and diminishing open space with growing heat islands, or a city with dense walkable neighborhoods shaded by mature trees. Let's choose the latter. It's visionary, it's common sense.
Thank you. So 178, that is Marty. Is 178 here? Oh, awesome. 178, followed by 179, David Haynes. And then 180, Julie. Marty?
Please redraw the West Green Lake map to exclude the area between Winona and the lake and provide space for rain gardens. Seattle Public Utilities in King County pays residents to install rain gardens to absorb toxins from stormwater runoff. Seattle's Geodata website shows permeable pavement, albeit a sparse amount, installed on the slopes of East Finney Ridge and Aurora and around the lake. Rob Suzette, Parks and Recreation, water quality expert, wrote to OPCD in December 20th of '24, quote, "The zoning updates will increase impervious surfaces, increase stormwater runoff and phosphorus loading to Green Lake, increase the frequency and intensity of toxic algae, and result enclosure to all recreational uses to protect human health and prevent dog deaths. Preserve the quality of Green Lake for the entire city. Redrop the map of West Green Lake to provide a buffer close to the lake, provide open space to allow for rain gardens and absorb toxins, and provide phosphorus-enhanced treatment of stormwater and..."
All right, thank you so much. All right, David Haynes, Mr. Haynes.
We need to reimagine the 21st century first-world quality redevelopment of Seattle without so much car-centric road rage and consider an amendment where you block off the side roads, get rid of the asphalt, stop weaponizing the tree ordinance, and then rebuild the entire side street as green build scape and green sustainable housing. And then you could like walk, like a block or two or three. Anyway, you know, Amendment 66 would help with that. But, you know, we need to get rid of, first, I want to know, did any of the landlords on the City Council acknowledge that they got a conflict of interest about the concerns that people have about sabotaging the integrity of the next 20 years of redevelopment, putting restrictions and sabotaging the integrity of the comprehensive plan, shifting all these billions of dollars and millions of dollars to unqualified nonprofits who are going to build warehouse echo on the side of the road? And we got all these like landlords who are sabotaging the integrity of the redevelopments. We need to have an investigation of the City Council and have pedestrian-centric neighborhoods.
Thank you, David.
Or we're gonna have road rage driving through every block.
Thank you, David. We have 180, Julie. Before you go, if I can get numbers 181 to 190 to stand up. 181 to 190, that is Kayden. 181. 182 is Ben Heath. 183 is not here. 184 is Alec. So that is 181 through 190, and we have 12 minutes until our sign-up period is closed. Julie, kick us off. Well, you don't need to kick us off. We've been kicked. So you can keep us going. Keep us going. Keep pedaling.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. My name is Julie Tokashiki Skerritt, and I've lived in Seattle for over 20 years. I live in your district, Joy. I feel very fortunate to have lived in such a beautiful place filled with so much nature and greenery. It was a big assumption and naivete on my part to think that Tier 2 trees have protections against developers and that they can thoughtlessly just cut them down. Right now, the ordinances for the City of Seattle does not care about trees. If you're a developer, your plan will be approved with no amendments to bring down 100-year-old redwoods. It doesn't matter if there are resident eagles using them, not to mention the value that trees bring to us, not only for our physical health but mental health. The City of Seattle has the worst tree ordinance laws compared to Bellevue, Tacoma, Redwood, Issaquah, and Portland. I strongly support Amendment 93 and 102. And here, I'd like to show, share a sketch by...
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Julie. And you can send that to us so we have it, or if you want to leave it, whatever way is best for you.
I want to keep this, but I'll find a way.
No worries. You're good. So 181 through 190. 181 through 190. First person, Kayden, plus 182 is Ben. 184, Alec. 185 is Ed. 186 is Nicholas. 187 is Sherilyn. 188 is Alec. Alex. 189 is Henry. And 190 is Joe. All right? Kayden?
Hello, and thank you for listening for so long. I'm Kayden, a 22-year-old Filipino immigrant who's called District 1 of Seattle home for 20 years. I grew up in a multi-generational household where my grandparents, parents, aunt, sibling, and cousins all took care of each other in a crowded but lively, single-family home. The thousands of households like mine can be uniquely supported by the close-yet-separated spaces missing middle housing provides. I strongly believe in supporting Seattle's diversity and elderly population through wide-scale upzoning across the entire city. I've since left my family's home for a one-bedroom apartment in West Seattle that I share with my partner. In this small space, we hosted his homeless sibling for a month and a half as they navigated the copious paperwork and bureaucracy for housing. As someone who endured architecture school while spending more than half of my income on rent and supporting my partner's queer, trans, and disabled sibling through homelessness, I know there isn't enough being done to support young people in this city. I support the incentivization and creation of more neighborhood centers, low-income housing, social housing, and upzoning beyond what's outlined in the current plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kayden. Next, we have 182, Ben, followed by 184, Alec.
Hi there. Thanks for taking all this time to do this. Yeah, I'm Ben Heath, Seattle-born and bred. I think it's easy to kind of, you know, dismiss tree advocates in this city as kind of selfish, old, out-of-touch nimby's, but I think they're on to something deeper and a little bit wiser in the sense that trees are kind of the only symbol we have to our connection to something that is not human in the urban environment. And that is so important now to have some connection to something older and something that will outlast us. And to sort of just break it down to ecosystem services or density, I think misses a deeper component of what that stuff stands for and why it's important to preserve it. And we need the housing here, but we also, we gotta not lose sight of what we're losing if we cut it all down.
Awesome. Thank you, Ben. Ben, born, bred, Seattle. I got you. Alec, number 184, plus 185, Ed.
Thank you, Council. Alec from Madrona, older but not old. I want that in the record. We have a great city. I'm here five years, live in Madrona in Joyce District. And, you know, I think that a lot of the work that you all are doing is really important and valuable, and I certainly support growth in Madrona and all the neighborhoods in the city, but I would say that not every neighborhood is the same, and some of these amendments, I think, can be improved upon, particularly the bus route, mass transit amendments relating to, you know, frequent stops. That would basically create the whole city into a frequent transit zone and would really move the housing development, you know, beyond, you know, where we think it should be. And then relatedly, certainly for Madrona, Queen Anne, and other neighborhoods, thinking about Amendment 72 and the development and environment of areas. So thank you for considering those.
Awesome. Thank you, Alec. 186, or excuse me, 185, Ed, 186. We have seven more minutes until the sign-up sheet closes. You're all good. Go ahead, Ed.
Hi, I'm Ed Newbold from Beacon Hill, and I'm hoping the Emerald City can live up to its image. And I say that because I'm a wildlife artist who has had a store at the Pike Place Market for 42 years, and that's 42 years of talking to people from all over the world who love Seattle because we love our trees. Now imagine our city with a tweaked comp plan where the developers will be calling up the tree activists and architects to plan creative ways to save trees on a lot and be rewarded by the city with more height or space for stacked, flat housing. Affordable. No more demonstrations, the developers and the tree activists will be on the same page. There is nothing nimby about this. We're talking about density, more density, more actual housing affordability, and more trees, a win-win solution, and other cities are doing it. And amendments that can help achieve the 93, 102, 93, and 102. Thanks to the Council, you guys are doing a marathon, and this is what democracy looks like.
Awesome. Thank you, Ed. We have actually a rating of 1.4 on Google reviews, so if you want to go... I'm serious. I just checked. If you want to go on and give us five stars, that would raise us up. Thank you, Ed. All right.
Thank you, Ed.
186, followed by 187.
Love the vest.
Hi, City Council. Hope you guys are all doing well today. I'm Nick. I was born and raised in Seattle. Currently, I'm renting at North Gate, here to support Amendments 34 and 84. I'm really hoping that they would be supportive to the growth of a very expensive city that's hard to afford to live in, and I think the city deserves to have more room for more wonderful people. I'd like to also have it be a space that I could afford to have my partner move to and raise a family here. I mentioned last time that I was here, you know, as a mental health therapist, and I've seen more since our last session, clients that really struggle to afford to live here and the effect that that has on them, and watching someone, you know, go through that process and have to get up and move is difficult, and the stress that it puts on them. I really encourage you to consider the first two amendments. If I'm being honest, please avoid Amendment 102. Thank you guys so much for, yeah, it's been a crazy...
Thank you, Nicholas. 187 and 188. Is 187 here? That's Sherilyn. Four minutes. Countdown begins, four minutes. Sherilyn, no. 188, is Alex here? 188, Alex Brussels. Alex, 188. So no 187, 188. And then 189, Henry, followed by Joe, 190. Hi, Henry.
Hi. My name is Henry. I'm a homeowner, and I'm a constituent of Councilman Kettle's district. Maybe the Seattle freeze is real. Nimbys want to freeze Seattle's growth. They want to freeze Seattle's progress. They want to freeze Seattle in time so their scenic views aren't overshadowed by denser, taller housing occupied by working-class people, early-career professionals, young families, people of color? Anyone here? And immigrants, who also just want to live in the city. Here, two months ago, someone lamented about big soulless complexes for low-income housing. Patricia, poor people have souls too. Please strengthen the stacked flat bonus, extend the bonus to all lots, expand affordable housing density bonus citywide, create similar bonuses for low-rise and mid-rise zones. Please support Councilman Rink's Amendment 34 to establish eight additional neighborhood centers. I have a son, and 10 years from now, I want him to live in a world-class city teeming with people from all...
Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Now, we have 190, Joe. And then, before you start, Joe, calling numbers 191 through 200. Are you, Joe? Okay, awesome. 191 through 200, we have two minutes for the sign-up to continue open. And colleagues, we have 220 people signed up. We are on number 190 with Joe. Okay, so 220 people signed up. We don't know what sign-up is out there looking like, but we will take it in, and we are on number 190. Hold on one second, Joe. And then 191 through 200, that is Aaron, that is Rafford, that is Ron, that is Ken, that is Holden, that is Mandy, that is Susan, Amy, Mara, and 199, I can't read the last name, and I apologize. Joe, you are up.
Thank you, council members. My name is Joe, and I'm a renter in District 3. I love my Capitol Hill neighborhood. I love the people, the walkability, and yes, the abundant trees. I feel privileged to live in such a place, but it doesn't need to be a privilege. My little pre-war apartment was not built as a luxury good. It was, it became one because we've outlawed the construction of anything like it. The One Seattle Plan will help address our housing crisis, but it does not go far enough. I urge you to strengthen the plan so that more Seattleites can afford a vibrant, walkable neighborhood like mine. Please support Amendments 34 for more neighborhood centers as originally proposed, 84 to remove outdated parking mandates that contribute to the heat island effect, 89 to allow more stacked flats like my apartment, and Kettle's Amendment 61 encouraging affordable housing throughout the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Aaron, 191. Is Aaron here? 191. Are you, Aaron?
It's not.
Hi, Aaron, 191. And it's, before you start, Aaron, it's 6:30, and so the comment sign-up is closed. We will double-check. Thank you, Patty. And Aaron, you can go ahead and start.
My name is Aaron Yan, and I've been a resident of West Seattle for over nine years. My wife and I rented a house in San Francisco for 14 years, starting in the early 2000s, but down there, we were never able to afford to buy a house in California's insane housing market. We raised our daughter there until she was nine, at which point, a job opportunity arose for me in Seattle. We used our retirement funds to make our down payment on our house here. But since then, the house has doubled in value. In fact, we could not afford to buy our house now. So it feels like San Francisco all over again. So four years from now, hopefully, when my daughter graduates from college, she'll be looking for an apartment here, and maybe within the next 10 years, my wife and I will be thinking about downsizing into an apartment. But Seattle still needs more housing to make these things financially viable. So in this respect, I support the comp plan and urge the Council to pass legislation that streamlines building more housing of all kinds, apartment buildings, townhomes, and especially stacked flats. Thanks for your consideration.
Awesome. Thank you, Aaron. 192, followed by 193. 192, awesome.
Hey there. Thanks for having us all. My name's Rafi Rankeo. I'm a resident in District 2, lucky enough to own my home. I work for the EPA, and I'm on the Seattle Bike Advisory Board, but I'm here in my own capacity this evening. I'm here to vocally support Amendments 7, 34, 60, 63, 65, 66, 67, 82, 84, 86, 89, and 91, and I would urge you to reject Amendments 40 and 39. I just wanted to say that we need more homes, we need walkable, bikable neighborhoods, more robust city centers, stacked flats, elimination of parking minimums, and more neighborhood shops and cafes. of parking minimums, and more neighborhood shops and cafes. To that note, I'd like to highlight Councilmembers Nelson, Rank, and Strauss's Amendments 65 through 67. I think it's a no-brainer. Love little neighborhood cafes and shops. Everyone does. To that end, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have number 193. Ron, followed by Ken. You're 194. Is Ken here? 194? No. Okay, well, hold on, Ron. And then Holden, 195. Is Holden here? Awesome. Whichever mic is good, but awesome. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Hi, thanks so much for taking the time to listen. My name is Ron. I live in CD2. I own a house that's over 100 years old in a neighborhood full of majestic, magical old trees. And I live one or two blocks from the proposed Seward Park Neighborhood Center. And I'm here to express my enthusiastic support for including the Seward Park Neighborhood Center in this with Amendment Number 34. So, thanks. Thank you, council member, and all the neighborhood centers. This is one of my three children, and I want a neighborhood center where I can walk to my kids. We spend too much time in the city driving our children around. We need more time to walk to neighborhood amenities and also welcome more residents into the Seward Park Neighborhood with mixed housing types. So I'm really excited about that and all the other things that we've been hearing about. So, go as far as you can. We really need it. And if we don't do that, plenty of trees are going to get chopped out in the urban sprawl zone lands. So, actually, the more we can do housing here, the better. And let's start with Seward Park. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ron. 194, Ken. Wait, did I skip over you? Did I skip over you? My bad. Ken, you're Holden, 195. You're good.
Howdy, council members. I'm a renter in D6. I'm here to support increased density, more neighborhood centers, getting rid of parking minimums, and stacked flat bonuses. Specifically, I support Amendments 34 and 50, and all others that allow for more housing across the city. I recently moved away from the proposed Nickerson site over to Ballard, in large part because it was a pain to walk or bike to the grocery stores or to access other amenities that denser neighborhoods like Ballard offer. Had there been more density, you know, there could be more than just a 7-Eleven in the area. I especially hope that that neighborhood center gets approval because it is a part of the city with so much potential. Given the Fred Meyer and Lake City closing, widespread retail and office vacancy, dwindling Seattle public school enrollment, it is clear that we should be trying to attract more folks to the city and not putting up artificial barriers that make it unaffordable for regular folks to live here. Neighborhood character needs neighbors, and it needs characters. I ask that you actually create neighborhood character by allowing for more neighborhood centers and for more ambitious comp plan, instead of building a proverbial gate around neighborhoods only accessible to people who were here decades ago and the wealthy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Holden. Next, we have Mandy, 196, and then Susan, 197.
Hi there. I'm Mandy. I live in the Central District. And Joy, I know you grew up there, and I'm confident that as you represent us, you will hopefully vote in favor of things that your neighbors care about. But I'm here to talk about trees, and I'm here to talk about protecting Seattle's urban forests. We are number five nationwide for urban heat islands, and we are losing 340 private property trees per month. So I'm asking you to vote yes on Amendment 93, which incentivizes developers to preserve trees and create spaces for more. Without it, they can pave over 95% of a lot. And also, I'm asking you to vote yes on Amendment 102. It brings Seattle up to other cities' tree standards, like New York City, Portland, and Boston, and closes three important, excuse me, loopholes in our tree ordinance. Over 50% of Seattle's trees are on private residential land. And without those amendments, 93 and 102, the comprehensive plan greenlights the removal of all of it. So, we need trees on private property. And as someone who moved here 11 and 1/2 years ago from the godforsaken city of Dallas, Texas, I would be really sad to see any more concrete versus trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Awesome. 197, 198, 199, and 200. You all are next. And so that is, that was Mandy. We're at Susan, Amy, Mara, 199.
I'm Susan Mossberg. Thank you for this opportunity. I strongly urge you to support the amendments and revisions that you've received from Seattle residents for thoughtful growth and from the Montlake rezoning task force. I'm originally from Minneapolis, and it's a city that's often pointed to as one that has successfully eliminated single-family residents' neighborhoods for the laudable goals of affordable housing equity and preventing urban sprawl, just like we're trying to do here in Seattle. I was recently there and asked people what had happened. I was surprised when they said, "We still have 20-foot setbacks. What are you talking about?" As the local paper put it, "The change eliminates the single-family district category from the city's zoning requirements. New triplexes would still have to follow the same height setback and building requirements of single-family homes and duplexes." In other words, they retain their 20-foot setback. So, please do follow the example of Minneapolis. Include, recommit to design and planning and effective oversight of --
Thank you, Susan. 198, Amy, plus 199, and then 200.
Hello, I'm Amy Gleixner. I rent in Montlake in District 3. I'm glad Montlake was included for higher density. It's not enough, but I'll take it for now. Seattle and Montlake has become my adopted home, but if I were starting today, it might not be. When I moved to Seattle in 2010, I could afford to rent a stacked flat in the U District for one year, then the stacked flat behind the Montlake Bike Shop for three years. I still had money left over for my Roth IRA and hobbies, and that was all on my $25,000 grad student salary with no roommates. After a brief stint in Montlake, me believe my husband and I moved back to Montlake because we love it so much. We're still renting, but we can only afford to do so because we're both software engineers now. Our rent would be 74% of our combined salaries if we were grad students today. I love the city and the fact our state is one people want to move to for their safety, but they're choosing other states because it's too expensive. We can't change the regressive tax code at the city level, but we can address the housing crisis. I urge this council to adopt the amendments supported by the Urbanist and provide us the most possible density of a diversity of housing types while still keeping Seattle evergreen. We can and we must do both. Thank you.
Awesome. Next two numbers in this group, 199 and then 200. Are you 199? Yes?
Hi, my name --
Yeah, you're 19. I just confirmed you're --
Donna Thorns. And I actually moved here in 1996. I was very excited. I came from New York City, and I was like, oh, my goodness, Seattle is like New York 100 years ago. And I just, my heart's still with it. And at this point, I'm a little worried, just because we're facing civilization collapse, and we're dealing with a lot of things on top, you know, of just city growth. And we're not dealing with that, I don't think, very well. I'm even a little worried about how we're handling our built environment and how the houses are getting torn down. Old-growth buildings are getting torn down instead of just being propped up. And this is why I'm here. Am I done?
No, you still have 10 seconds.
Okay, okay. And so, I just really want us to slow down. I understand that we need to, like, have some sort of structure, but we do need to slow down.
Thank you. Now, the time has expired. Yeah. Awesome. Understood. Thank you so much. Thoughtful. I got you. All right, number 200, Mara. Is Mara here? So I'm gonna do a time check. We've been, we still have 40 public speakers. It's 6:40 right now. Councilmembers, do we need to have a quick recess for anything? Or everyone good? Just power through? Are you guys good? All right. You humans good? Sorry, I got it. Humans, I'm used to saying, hey, guys, like, no, less like sports. Our humans are good? We're good? Okay, awesome. So, we're gonna go ahead and do numbers. What was that? Thank you, 200. Okay, so we're gonna be 201 to 210. So, 201 to 210. 201 to 210. And that is Brandon is first, 201 to 210. Ethan. Trey, 203, 204. Tracy, 205. Alex, 206. I can't read that name. Last name, Boyer. 207, Leah. 208, Marissa. 209, Chun. 210, Kim. So, we're at 201. 201. Awesome.
Can't wait to tell my kids and my grandkids that the reason that Seattle's too expensive is because people were worried that building more housing would kill too many trees and orcas, claims which are totally nonsensical, by the way. By far, the largest threats to trees and orcas are respectively suburban development happening outside of Seattle, which requires leveling entire forests to build homes, and microplastics from car tires entering the water, which is exacerbated by people living far away from where they work. Are we committed to building a safe community for people of all walks of life to take refuge as we fight against a fascist federal administration? Or are we going to allow the moral weight of changing how a neighborhood looks be comparable to the danger and discomfort of not having a home? As the largest city in the state, we can have an enormous impact on reducing homelessness while improving the climate by building more transit-oriented development, building more dense buildings, adopting single-stair and point-access-block standards, building stacked flats, building density on every street, not just arterials, and allowing businesses to operate on the ground floor of every building. I urge you to adopt the amendments that work toward these goals and reject the amendments that slow down development due to fearmongering. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next, we have 102, Ethan, followed by Trey, 103.
Hi, I'm Ethan Carlinsey, and I'm a Madison Valley resident. I recently did the Madison Valley walking tour of the neighborhood center there, and I realized it's really small. It's like two blocks out from the Madison Valley arterial. So, with that in mind, I'd like to express my support for expanding neighborhood centers and re-adding previously studied neighborhood centers that were studied in the EIS. Also, I'd like to support Amendments 89 and 90, expanding stacked flats bonuses, 54 through 59, which increase flexibility for development. And also, I'd like to express support for corner stores and, in general, just making development more flexible. I think if development had more options, more trees would be able to be preserved. So, I think -- And there's a lot more amendments I support, but that vibe there, that's why I support.
Awesome. Thank you, Ethan. You said "that vibe," right? Okay, awesome. That's not like it. "That vibe." I got you. Okay, Trey, 203, and then 204, Tracy. Is Trey here, 203? Is 203 here? No? 204, Tracy? Awesome. Come on down to The Price is Right.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. And thanks, council, for staying here so late tonight to hear from everyone. My name is Tracy Berman. We have worked to bring together residents from 23 different neighborhoods to analyze how this plan would bring density to Seattle in the neighborhood residential zones, which we strongly support. Unfortunately, the bill actually incents the destruction of the middle housing that we have and the affordable housing that we have and the multifamily housing that we have in favor of, with the new allowances for square footage, lot coverage and heights, McMansions, and in favor of also mini-mansions, allowing over 2,000 square feet tall, skinny homes on individually subdivided microlots. I'm not sure who these over-million-dollar homes serve, but not everybody who needs density in Seattle. The over 100 amendments still do not make middle housing the highest and best use of land, and developers always seek that. So, we're losing our affordable and multifamily housing, our trees, our green space, and our privacy, which is the very reason people want to live in Seattle.
Thank you, Tracy. Number 1, 205 and 206 are up. Is 205 here, Alex? Awesome. And then 206, you are next. Awesome. 205, Alex.
Hi, my name is Alex. I've never done anything like this.
You're good. Okay, so, hold on. Before you start, do the microphone up. Get close, and then you can talk into it. And then you are a pro. Go ahead.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, so I've lived in Seattle for about five years. I was born here, but I lived on Bay Ridge Island. And after moving to Seattle, I really fell in love with it because primarily of walkability and the density and just being able to reach everything that I want without needing to drive everywhere, that and transit. So, I'd just like to register my support for any amendments that support that sort of thing. Trees are pretty cool, too. I love them. So, that as well. But really, I think density is very important. I think things like removing parking minimums are incredibly impactful to the city. I think they help make livable places. That's mostly all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next, 206, followed by 207.
Jackie.
Hey, Jackie. Sorry, I couldn't -- hey, Jackie.
I signed it like a coffee bar. I forgot you had to read it.
You did. It's cool.
So, building on what Tracy said earlier, this week, Kroger, Fred Meyer reminded us all that developers, private equity, and corporations will always pursue the highest and best use of land. In the case of Kroger, Fred Meyer, real estate opportunities were more profitable than operating a grocery store. This legislation and amendments can describe density and far all day long, but developers will still choose the highest and best use of land. And as it's written today, that's going to be the McMansions and the single tower homes, skinny homes, whatever you want to call them, on 1,250-square-foot lots. And so, it makes me wonder, how did a middle housing bill turn into a single-family luxury bill? I don't understand that. So, I feel sad for all the people with the hopes and aspirations of a denser Seattle who are counting on this comprehensive plan and instead will see huge McMansions rise up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Leah, 207, followed by Marissa, 208. Hi, Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Carden. I rent in District 3 in a walkable neighborhood, which is rare in Seattle and in the country, and I love it. I live there by choice. And I'm asking you to enact Amendments 17, 34, 61, 66, 84, 89, 90, 91, and anything that incentivizes mixed use and housing density. The historic small apartment buildings, stores, and cafes that we all love and give our neighborhoods character are mostly grandfathered in and have been either illegal or impractical for developers to build for decades. Stacked flats are better for basically everyone, those with mobility challenges, people aging in place, anyone with small children. And I think they're a great alternative to what is being built currently. However, I encourage density in any form. I love density. So, I think developers, being companies, they aim to make money, so they build what our current system incentivizes them to build. So, we should incentivize them to build affordable and small housing developments, and we also need to pursue an alternative by funding social housing as much as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Leah. Next, we have 208, Marissa, followed by 209, Chun, 210, Kim.
Hello. Thank you all for powering through. My name is Marissa Mora. I'm a renter in D2, a public health professional, and as of this week, a staff member of Futurewise. Despite moving here from Denver just one year ago, I've already seen firsthand the impact of disproportionate housing development in predominantly BIPOC communities. As a queer Latina newcomer to Seattle, I hope council members seize this opportunity to rectify the unjust housing policies that have plagued so many American cities. I'm here to implore you to support amendments that facilitate sustainable, affordable growth of this city while enhancing walkability and livability. It is possible to achieve a future that prioritizes affordable housing in complete communities with a high quality of life, including healthy tree canopy. Don't squander this chance to build more homes, improve affordability, and reduce car dependency to allow Seattle a chance at an equitable future for all. Please adopt Amendments 34, 60, 63, 86, 89, 91, to support the best comp plan possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. 209, Chun, followed by 210, Kim.
Hi, my name is Chun. I've lived here for 14 years, and I'm here to address the comp plan. I live in the Alaska Junction of West Seattle, a dense, walkable neighborhood center of apartment buildings and small shops in District 1. And I love it. Unfortunately, too many of my friends are faced with either outlong commutes to their jobs and faraway satellites like Kent and Everett, or are contemplating leaving the region altogether to more affordable parts of the country to raise their children. We need far more housing options in transit for them to thrive in. And if we want to save our trees, then we should stop forcing people to sprawl ever outwards into the wilderness where the really old trees are. I urge you to support creating neighborhood centers, including Alki, encouraging the building of stacked flats, ending minimum parking mandates, and allowing us to build homes and small storefronts for ourselves. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Thank you. Before you go, Kim, let's call on speakers 211 through 220. 211 through 220, I will call off your names. That is Rose King. That is Ms. Joanna Cullen. 213, J.J. Bishop, James. Then we have Kate. 20, sorry, Conrad Parker. My eyes are old. Hans, 2019. You all are supposed to say, "No, you're not old," but --
You're not old.
Thank you. Skylar, and then Elizabeth.
Yeah, you're older.
Thank you. Say, "No, you're not old." All right, Kim, you're up.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Gould. I'm a fourth-generation Seattleite and a homeowner in Montlake. My urbanist friends have it right. Increasing density will open up our beautiful neighborhoods to more renters and owners. Diversity by income, phase of life, and family composition will increase across the city as desired. What many of our urbanist friends don't seem to appreciate is that we want our neighborhoods to be a place where they will want to raise their families. That means getting it right in terms of tree canopy, amenity areas, and building sizes. If we don't get it right, what the young urbanists don't yet foresee is that when they have families, they will be drawn to the suburbs, and that will add to sprawl. Our Montlake Group, SRTG, and Tree Action have each provided comprehensive inputs to support, reject, and modify the various incentives. We did this for the benefit of the entire city. We ask that you please consider our inputs as the path to Seattle's affordable and equitable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Sorry, I take a gulp of water. Thank you, Kim. 211, Rose, followed by Joanna Cullen. Hi, Rose.
Hello. Hi, my name is Rose. I'm a resident of District 3. I'm pro-density. I want to thank you guys so much for staying so late. I know this is a long day. And thanks for all the work you've done and your thoughtful amendments. I want to speak in support of a few of those. Please pass Councilmember Kettles Amendment 61 to provide social and affordable housing. Please pass Councilmember Kettles Amendment 61 to provide social and affordable housing density bonuses all across our city while removing the costly parking minimums. This amendment could kickstart social and affordable housing within areas of the city that have been effectively off-limits. I also want more housing of all types across our city, so please support Councilmember Rynx Amendment 34 to include more neighborhood centers. Please also incentivize stacked flats to increase the tree canopy. We do love trees on the density side. Amendments 70, 89, 90, and 91 all support stacked flats in the housing plan. I do want to reiterate Amendment 61 is especially important to me, and thank you all again for your time.
Thank you, Rose. Joanna?
Hi, I'm Joanna Cullen. I'm a resident of the Central District. Today, I am presenting a document supporting the amendments that improve and protect the health and well-being of our central area communities and oppose those that undermine the livability and environmental justice and disproportionately shift the burden to the neighborhoods that have already shouldered more than their share of increased density and disruption. Today, I wish to highlight two, that these do not minimize my community's support for the entire document. But first, please provide transparency regarding the discussions of boundaries for urban villages, centers, region, urban centers at this time. Renaming large areas of the Central District as part of Capitol Hill and other areas is unacceptable. Oppose Amendment 76. This amendment would add to the inequitable--
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. I know. But you can send us the email. You know our emails, and we'll connect. 212-- 213, J.J. Bishop. Awesome. And then 214, James.
Hi, everyone. My name is J.J., and I'm a homeowner in Madison Valley. Many of my friends cannot afford a single-family house, dadu, or townhouse, but could afford a condo. Over 210 of my neighbors have signed Free Madison Valley's petition, calling on City Council to allow more condos to be built in our area by legalizing taller multifamily buildings in our downtown and taller stacked flats everywhere else. Thank you all for your hard work drafting so many thoughtful amendments that do exactly that. I urge you to please pass Amendment 33, allowing seven-to-eight-story buildings and neighborhood centers near major transit stops. In downtown Madison Valley, that would mean more people can live within walking distance of the Rapid Ride G, 8, and 11 buses, and the Arboretum. Please also pass the following amendments that unleash the potential of stacked flats: Amendment 89 or 90 to eliminate the lot minimum and proximity to frequent transit requirements; Amendments 78 and 79 to incentivize family-sized and accessible units; and Amendment 91 to increase height for stacked flats that expand our tree canopy. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, J.J. James, 214, and then 214? Awesome.
Hello, council members. My name is James. I'm a homeowner in Madison Valley, and right now, our small business district is hardly thriving. I've spoken to several local shop owners who say they're worried about surviving because there just aren't enough customers in our neighborhood. I firmly believe that if we allow taller mixed-use buildings near our business district, we'll not only make housing more affordable, but will also create the foot traffic that small businesses need to survive. A denser, more walkable neighborhood benefits everyone, homeowners, renters, and business owners alike. The proposed new neighborhood center in downtown Madison Valley is a step in the right direction and will bring more life and vibrancy to our community. I fully support the petition J.J. mentioned urging the City Council to take bolder action, including to pass Amendment 33, allowing taller buildings in the neighborhood centers near major transit stops. And I urge you all to pass Strauss's amendment to increase the vibrancy of Madison Valley and other neighborhood centers around the city. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Number-- thank you, James. 215? It's 215 here. No, 216, Kate? Kate?
Hi, everybody. Thank you all so much for taking the time to do this today, and also thank you to all the comments in the room. I just want to say that, you know, I don't think that we have to give up all of the things that make Seattle a great city simply to get and become a more dense city. I firmly support us becoming a more dense city, a more livable city with urban centers, but we must preserve 20-foot setbacks. We must preserve our tree canopy. We must actually ensure that this is a place that everybody still wants to live. I will send in longer comments regarding my support for different amendments, but I really would like to encourage you all to continue to take, you know, the thoughtful process that you're doing, but also for our colleagues here, not to make this about, do you have money or not money, or do you care about density, but really think about thoughtfully the city you really want to live in and raise your kids-- Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Kate. Next, we have Conrad, 217. Hans, you're Conrad. Awesome. Is Hans here? Two. Awesome. Okay. Conrad.
Hi, I'm Conrad. I live in Madison Valley in District 3. I support commercial-use zoning in more neighborhoods, Amendment 66. Social and affordable housing bonuses, Amendment 61. More neighborhood centers, Amendment 34. And stacked flats, Amendment 70, 89, 90, and 91. I'd also specifically like to advocate for Amendment 784, which eliminate parking minimums. Seattle has had a lot of population growth in the last several years, but we, as new census data has shown, we have not been adding substantially many cars. We've only added one car per 10 new residents since 2017. 20% of Seattle households now do not own a car. It doesn't really make sense to add, to force developers to keep adding more parking when no one's choosing to own a car anyway. So if Port Townsend, Bellingham, Spokane, Bremerton, and Bothell can all eliminate parking mandates, we can too.
Awesome. Thank you, Conrad. What's your favorite restaurant in Madison Valley? Quick, go. Okay, I got you. Okay, good, good, good. Nice. All right, Hans.
Hey, council members. My name is Hans Schiefer. I'm 16 years old, and please listen to what Jerry Paulette said to you, that Seattle is mandated to protect trees. Even high school kids like me and my friends behind me can think of ways to build with trees. Why can't big developers or urbanists? You have a responsibility to my generation and yours, too. And I ask that you think ahead and leave space for trees and preserve the huge doug firs, cedars, and other big trees we have left. We don't-- and we really need for our climate. Please don't deny science. Don't give in to money. Vote yes on Amendment 93 and 102 before Seattle becomes a giant heat island. I do this not for me, but for everyone.
Thank you, Hans. 119, Skylar, and then 120, Elizabeth.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi, my name is Skylar, and I am a local high schooler. My family has lived in Ballard for four generations. I have been a scout for many years and just completed my Eagle Scout project. In scouting, we care about preserving our outdoor spaces, and I believe the city has a responsibility to care for nature, too. We live in the Evergreen State, and getting rid of our trees is, quite frankly, ridiculous. Families, kids, and teens need spaces to go out and enjoy nature. Getting rid of trees is also negatively impacting our aquatic ecosystems. Now is not the time to increase polluted runoff water by removing more trees that are mature and help filter water. When making your decision, I urge you to think about young people like me and the future generations who need accessible outdoor spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. What high school do you all go to?
We go to Blanchett.
Oh, nice. You're not the Braves anymore. You're the Bears?
Bears, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome. I'm a mascot person. All right, Elizabeth. Me, too.
Hi. Hi, my name's Elizabeth. Thank you so much for your time, by the way. I'm 17. I'm also involved in Scouting America. I actually just completed an Eagle project in my local neighborhood, Wedgewood neighborhood, that helped conserve a green space in the neighborhood. So I've spent countless hours enjoying our forest and waterways that we have in Seattle and just outside of Seattle, enjoying the benefits of trees that we have in Washington State. It shouldn't really just be a privilege that we have, that people who can travel outside of the city can have. It should be a privilege that everyone can enjoy. And I think it's important that we should build with the trees instead of building without the trees in Seattle, and that we should keep the trees in Seattle, because everybody should be able to enjoy our nature and what we have here. It doesn't-- building without the trees doesn't really consider the impacts that has our generation, not to mention the environmental impacts that we have. So please vote for Amendments 93 and 102 and add tier-three trees to Amendment 102.
Awesome. Thank you, Elizabeth. Now, we're on numbers 221 to 230. 221 to 230. And thank you to all the students that have come down. Even though I was rivals with your high school, it's okay. But thank you all for coming down. Really appreciate young people's engagement. It's our favorite. So 121 to-- or, excuse me, 121, we're going backwards. 221 to 230. And again, we have all the way up to 243 signed up, or 240-- Yeah. 243 signed up, so we're making way. So 221, is that Jacob? Awesome, Jacob. And then we have Amber, 222. Jordan, 223. Ruth, 224. 231. Go ahead, Jacob.
Good evening, all. My name is Jacob Abries, and I'm speaking in favor of Amendments 93 and 102. As a low-income renter who lives in District 5 and works in District 1, I strongly believe that we urgently need an exponential increase in middle housing, and we must likewise urgently secure enough tree canopy for a livable city. Mature trees happen to be our strongest and cheapest assets for climate resilience, and they're being removed at an alarming rate. To raise my family in Seattle, I need affordable housing, but I also need to have trees where I live for my family's health, their cooling effects, and their quality of life. The trees, not the family members, that is. As is well demonstrated with public transit development, land acquisition is a pricey and lengthy process. Likewise, as someone who works with contractors on a daily basis, I know well that if a contract doesn't have teeth in enforcement, contractors will move like water and take the easiest path out. If we make concessions to remove trees now, we'll never be able to reclaim what was lost. Please pass Amendments 93 and 102 and add tier-three trees to Amendment 102. Thank you again, council members, your security, and your staff.
Oh, thank you. Amber, you are up next, followed by Jordan.
Hello? Oh, please. Hi, I'm Amber, and thank you all for your time. I'm a research librarian that supports voting yes to Amendment 93 and Amendment 102. Urban density can happen with green spaces and trees canopies, and decisions on these amendments will have environmental, social, and safety impacts to residents. Ignoring climate change debates, studies have shown that nature-based therapy or nature prescriptions and green spaces are being labeled as urgent necessities in ensuring public health, public safety, and social equity in international studies from or in collaboration between urban-dense countries like Australia, India, Singapore, the UK, and Germany. Please consider the environmental and social impacts of this comprehensive plan. It may be worth studying our international counterparts who are still spending billions each year to reintegrate green spaces and tree canopies they've once lost after witnessing health-- social inequity and public safe degradation within urban-dense neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we have Jordan, followed by Ruth. So Jordan is one-- or 223? Is 223 here, Jordan? No? 224? 224? That should be Ruth. 224? No? Okay.
Chair, is that Jordan Singer and Ruth Harvey?
That is. You are correct.
It looks like they have left for the evening.
Okay, awesome.
I met with them on Wednesday.
You did? Awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Now, we're on 225. 225, Aria? Awesome. Hold on, don't go yet. Aria, let me get 226 as well. Is 226 here? Okay, awesome. Perfect. Okay, let's go.
Hello, my name is Aria, and I'm a 7th grader at Seattle Public Schools. Please protect the trees. They are so important to fight climate change and protect human and animal lives, yet they are still being chopped down at an alarming rate. 4,692 trees have been cut down since the tree ordinance was passed, and over 3,000 of them had trunks more than a foot of diameter. I especially urge you to protect our 100-year-old trees. They are irreplaceable. We can have housing and trees. The community has given you many suggestions. Now it's your turn to act. Prevent the city from paving over our trees and green space. So if we want to remain the Emerald City, stop chopping down what gives us our name.
Awesome. Thank you, Aria. Great job. And we expect a straight A's this school year. Thank you.
A plus.
A plus. All right. 1, 226. Yep, we're ready.
Hi, my name is Judy. I work at Seattle Public Schools. I want to talk to you about boundaries, because we all need them. Developers will build whatever makes the most money, because they are profit-making businesses and not charities. Unless we give them boundaries, they will continue their unsustainable practices of clearing lots for the most expensive housing possible, not middle housing, as we have seen in every neighborhood in Seattle. It is your job to set appropriate boundaries that balance developers' legitimate need for profit with our legitimately-- with our legitimate need for a livable environment. I am thankful for Councilmembers Strauss and Kettles' amendments to protect large trees. But Amendments 93 and 102 truly give us the best opportunity to grow our large tree infrastructure while we build new housing. So please vote for them, and vote for healthy boundaries.
Awesome. And we expect you to give all your students A pluses this year. All right. All right, Grant, 227, and then Brenda, 228, followed by Christopher, 229, and then Emily, 230.
Thanks, everyone, for a wonderful Friday night. I'm here urging the Seattle City Council to approve amendments that improve the affordability and sustainability of Seattle, specifically Amendments 34, 61, 65, 66, 67, 78, 84, and 89. Building up, not out, is the most sustainable path forward. It protects our forests from sprawl and makes a world-class transit system possible here in Seattle. Critically, it's the only way we will create enough housing to stabilize prices and make our city truly affordable for everyone. My parents live in unincorporated Snohomish County on the urban fringe, and recently, when I went and visited them, 150 acres of actual old-growth forest was cut down, which is about the same as three volunteer parks. The only way to protect the urban fringe and protect the actual old-growth forests is to develop here in the city. Once again, I'm urging you all to pass Amendments 34, 61, 65, 66, 67, 78, 84, and 90. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Grant. Brenda, 228, followed by Christopher Nix, 229, and then Emily, 230.
Thank you very much. My name is Brenda Lowe, and I'm originally from Manhattan, Washington Heights, and was amazed, moving here over 38 years ago, how green Seattle was, or, you know, has been. And now I'm in health care, and I'm very aware of the social justice issues around trees in neighborhoods. It's the people who are wealthy who can afford to have an abundance of trees and very concerned about our warming planet, and we have to balance development with saving and stewarding our trees. And I have a master's in regional planning. I gave up planning because I got very disheartened by the always planning for the status quo, and the developers always seemed to win out. So I'm hoping that we can really balance and take into consideration and have a new vision, as other people have said. Other cities are doing this. They're balancing the interests of development with saving trees.
Awesome, thank you. Next, we have Christopher Nix, and then Emily.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Nix, and in 2014, I escaped eastern Washington, more specifically, the suburban wasteland, that is, the tri-state cities in south-central Washington, and moved to the Seattle area to live in a more urban area where all my needs were within, not driving distance, but in walking distance. I currently work two jobs, one full-time, one part-time, just to maintain that lifestyle of being able to have things in walking distance. I shouldn't be able to do that. I should be able to live comfortably on one job. So I'm here to support the amendments that support affordable housing, such as stacked flats and other affordable middle housing. I also support Amendment 7 abolishing parking requirements citywide to decouple parking with housing to make construction more affordable, and Amendments 66 and 67 to allow more stores and businesses everywhere. While I support trees, I oppose Amendments 93 and 102 as they are not the right way of keeping and building Seattle's tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next, we have Emily, 230. Before you go, we have a call-up, 231 to 240. 231 to 240, and that is Ansel? We have Ansel. Thank you. Thank you for having me on. Ansel, Michael, Andrea, Aiden, Camille, Sanders, Susan, Timothy, Ben, and Rivers. Floor is yours, Emily.
I'm Emily Pankey, and I'm here to urge you and implore you to vote no on Amendment 34. We have tried trickle-down prosperity in the past. In the 1980s, Ronald Reagan promised that trickle-down economics would help the poorest in our country, and that was a failure. Trickle-down housing is not working here in Seattle. If you've looked at the recent excellent reporting, Seattle Times, a pro-density reporter, there is evidence that we have high vacancy rates in our Seattle housing that is meant to be affordable and which the city has spent billions, hundreds of billions of dollars, on building. It's not working. An 11% vacancy rate means that we have supply that's not matching the demand for affordable housing. Where is the data that suggests that this upzoning will increase affordable housing? I have a longtime experience as a renter in the Gasworks neighborhood. I've lived in an older building there where my rent was much more affordable than the luxury units that have been put up on Stone Way. My landlord was local. She didn't engage in every market increase that she could. I was appreciative of that. Amendment 34 benefits the developers who will be enriched by it and will build luxury housing that will not trickle down. Please vote no on 34.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have 231, followed by 232, Ansel, and then Michael, 232. You are, I'm sorry, Ansel. Awesome. Thank you, Ansel. I appreciate it. If we, it's your birthday? Ansel, happy birthday. You waited all this time for? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ansel. Appreciate you. You should have signed up with a different name. We wouldn't have known. Sorry, I'm not telling you all what to do, but... Okay, 232. 232? Was that? He was 231?
I'm 233.
Okay, is 232 here, Michael? Is Michael here, 232? No? And then you are Andrea, 230? Awesome.
Hi. Hi. Everybody, my name's Andrea John Smith, and I am a mental health counselor working in community mental health. My husband is an affordable housing developer. We have made our home in the Rayner Valley since the early '90s. Transit rider, density fan. On my block alone, we have welcomed four big multifamily housing developments, including one offering affordable units. It's great. On August 20th, five huge evergreen trees with trunks over two feet in diameter were clear-cut across the street from us to make room for dense housing? No! These trees were cleared to build seven little cottages that will in all likelihood be put on the market for somewhere between $800,000 to $1 million bucks. No shared walls, no stacked flats, which would have been great. Maybe not all the trees could have been saved, but some would. My example shows how our current code is playing out. It is a free pass for private developers to do whatever. In this case, fill 500-plus-year-old trees that were providing vital shade and cleaning the air. Don't realize the code changed in 2023. Those changes cleared the way for this apocalypse. Amendments 102 and 93 would help. Please take the step of supporting those amendments. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you, Andrea. Now, we have Aiden, 234, 235. Camille, Sanders, 236. Which number are you, 234?
Yep.
Hey.
I'm Aiden Thornsberry. I strongly support Councilmember Kettles' Amendment 99 to eliminate overly prescriptive amenity requirements. There are already lot coverage limits. Adding additional amenity requirements would force all-new housing to adopt very similar lot plans, limiting flexibility and not allowing home builders to build housing that people want. So we don't have existing prescriptive amenity requirements for neighborhood residential zones, and I don't want Seattle to add a requirement that would counterintuitively worsen site plans by forcing buildings to be placed in a very specific way on the lot. I oppose the Amendments 93 and 102. These would make it difficult to add housing in Seattle. We already have a tree code. Doesn't make sense to have ordinance, have things for certain zones, but not others. Want to break the tree code. That could be done separately. Then, I also support Councilmember Kettles' Amendment 70 to allow housing not just for stacked flats, but all kinds of, the densest housing. Townhomes and ADUs are popular because people like them.
Thank you, Aiden. 236, or 235, and then 236, 235? Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Camille Zahiko. I live in District 4. I am a renter of a very affordable apartment that is an older building that I fear isn't going to get sold. And that other speaker was correct. It's corporate landlords. It's not the small owners of these buildings that are charging these extreme rents. So as long as we allow that, we're going to have an affordable housing. But what I'm here for is to tell you that there were six appeals, or six suits filed about the environmental statement of the One Seattle Plan. They got dismissed, except for one. There's still one standing plaintiff who filed an appeal. There is a pending appeal on this plan, which means they could file a motion for stay, which means this cannot move forward if it's granted. And I think that that's important, and I also think that I hope it happens because there's no protection for the southern residents in what I thought was a 10-year plan. I looked, it's a 20-year plan. No environmental protection. There is pending litigation regarding that, and you need to be aware of it. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. We're on, thank you, Camille. We're on number 236, Sanders. Awesome. And then 237, is Susan here? 237, Susan's here? Awesome. Hey, Susan. And then Timothy, 238. Is Timothy here? Awesome. And then 239, Ben? Ben, welcome. And then Rivers. Is Rivers here? Awesome. All right, Sanders.
Hi, Sanders. Seattle is a wonderful place, which I and many others have recently called home over the last decade. We've been one of the fastest-growing large cities in the country every year for over a decade. In order to ensure that the rate of change of the cost of housing doesn't increase even more, you must keep building more housing in the city. So I ask council to support Amendments 7, 8, 13, 33, 34, 36, 52, 56 through 61, 63, 65, 66, 69, 70, 72 through 74, 76 through 79, 84, 86, 87, 89, 91, 95. And I ask council to oppose Amendments 4, 35, 37 through 39, 40, 41, 81, 93, 97, 102, 103, and 110. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanders. All right, next, we have Susan, followed by Timothy, Ben, and then Rivers. Hi, Susan.
Hi there. Susan Fedora, District 1. Regarding the argument that building more housing will increase affordability, according to RE/MAX, inventory on homes for sale has doubled since last year to the tune of 10,000-plus, and there are currently over 13,600 apartments for rent, but the prices are equal to or greater than last year. The One Seattle Plan is not going to lower housing costs for rental purchase because it is corporations dominating the market and driving housing costs and market rates despite the increase in housing of the region. Until this reality is effectively addressed, it will continue to plague the affordability of our city. The main reason I'm here, though, is Seattle is just emerging from the third-dryest summer on record. Three of the driest summers have occurred in the past 10 years. Last week, there was a scientific study released based on decades of analysis and assessment of the Amazon rainforest that draws a very clear correlation between deforestation to the tune of tree loss being 75% of the cause. People tend to forget the city's unique because it is part of the expansive Pacific coastal northwest rainforest.
No worries. You could put your, yep, comments in there and send it to us. Thank you, Susan. Susan, Timothy Kitchen, Ben, and then Rivers. And then we still have a couple more. We have three more after that. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone today. My name is Timothy Kitchen. I'm a renter in Fremont. I live within the proposed Gasworks Neighborhood Center. I would love to see more housing in this area. It makes a lot of sense to me. I scooter to Gasworks like every other day, and it's a beautiful community space. It's awesome. Having a neighborhood center would be awesome for greater access to parks. It is right on the Burt-Gumlin Trail, which is a very efficient transit method, which I traverse regularly. More people should be able to live near Gasworks. Thank you, Councilmember Ring for bringing forward Amendment 341. I would also like to mention renter net worth versus homeowner net worth. My understanding is it's... Hold on, I gotta take a breath. Okay. My understanding is that it's about 10 times the net worth of a homeowner versus a renter. So my generation was told that we would have, get a home to have financial security, but that is really out of reach for, like, most of us. So I'd like to have greater access to home. And there is a thing of supply and demand. If you compare how many, the cost of three townhomes versus one single family or a whole apartment building, it's better. And I support sex flax and the...
Thank you, Timothy. Ben, and then Rivers. Hi, Ben.
Hi. My name is Ben Pettigo. I'm a renter in District 4. I grew up in Seattle, and I've lived here almost my entire life, and I hope to be able to in the future. I came to voice my support for additional neighborhood centers, such as those in Nickerson, Gasworks, and Wallingford, and for the expansion of planned neighborhood centers proposed by Councilmember Strauss. I've heard many say that these were added at the last minute, but part of why I came down here is that I saw that these were included in the original EIS, and I was actually sad to see them removed from the mayor's plan months ago. I agree with speakers who have advocated for protecting and expanding tree canopy, but I believe that the best way to do that is by increasing density in the city rather than encouraging sprawl. I support smart compromises that encourage tree-compatible development, like Amendment 91, and I urge you to reject amendments like 81 and 102, which would mire development in further red tape. And finally, as someone whose car was dirt total, and I've been getting by just fine, and I really support the removal of parking minimums throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I'm sorry about your car, my man. That sucks. All right, Rivers, you're next. And before you go, Rivers, we have our last three folks. We have Susan Ward, we have Rebecca, and then Eric. So 241 to 243. Awesome. All right. Councilmember Wares, you are off mute.
I know that. I was just expressing my joy.
I'm gonna have to know that. Okay, my apologies. Thank you, Rivers.
Duly noted. Thank you, Chair.
Rivers.
Hi, my name is Rivers Deisart. I live in District 5. I'm a renter. I've lived there with my family for about 18 years. Right outside our living room window, there's two amazing native conifers that are conjoined, Douglas fir and a Western red cedar. They're amazing. And three years ago, they were protected as exceptional trees. Now, they are no longer protected, as well as all the trees like them that are big, amazing, huge trees that are doing so much for us. So I'm here to add my voice to, with all the others that have spoken for the trees. We can have our beautiful, amazing trees that make our city so green and wonderful and do so much, like I said, and we can have housing. And so I would like you to please pass Amendment 77, 93, and 102, and please do not pass Amendment 72. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rivers. Numbers 241 to 243. We have Susan Ward, followed by Eric Johnson. Is Eric here? Yep. Awesome. Peace sign. And then Rebecca. Great. Awesome. Perfect. All right, y'all are ready.
Good afternoon, or good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for working late today. I'm Susan Ward. I want to urge you to vote for Amendment 102. With this amendment, alternative site plans could be required, plans that would conserve existing trees on the site. It would also allow changes in the tree protection area and expansion of the area in front or rear yards to retain trees. We need more legislation to preserve the canopy, which has taken huge hits in the last years of development, over 1,000 trees in 2024. Amendment 102 would be a one good step. I also urge you to vote no on Number 58. ADUs and DADUs are now standard in most new residences. They increase the impermeable surfaces and lot coverage. They must be calculated in the square footage. Number 72 could harm urban streams and wetlands, increase runoff, and result in shifting house foundations and put home buyers at risk. Please reject it. Let's not leave a treeless town for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We have Eric Johnson, followed by Rebecca.
Hello. Eric from Whittier Heights. I was fortunate enough to be able to move into some of the more affordable housing in Ballard, one of the first major townhouse complexes that went up. When I moved into my townhouse, I was told stories of how much the neighbors fought against my townhouse's construction, how much people fought against change. When I moved into the neighborhood, I was blown away by the attention put into fighting density when density is not the problem. The desperate need for investment and future modernization of our city is the problem. Densification will only bring more investment and more improvement to our neighborhoods. In the last two years, I've invested my energy into something like pedestrian safety, making it safer to cross the street. Do the people who have benefited from the triple or quadrupling of their property values in the last 20 years, the city needs to grow and improve. Densification is not the problem. Let's focus more on things like basic safety and infrastructure. I strongly support the densification and modernization of...
Thank you, Eric. And our final speaker, 243.
Chair, point of personal privilege?
Point, you are recognized, Councilmember Strauss.
While Eric's still in the room, I just want the record to reflect that the city of Seattle needs to fix 8th Avenue.
Councilmember Strauss is going to fix 8th Avenue.
Personally.
Personally.
Yeah, okay. You come up to D5 when you're done, buddy.
Oh, I will.
So 243.
Right.
This is, you are our last speaker of these public hearing. So this is pretty, this is pretty special.
Well, I know.
I just want to savor this moment.
And you all, like I said... Yeah, I do, too. Stamina award.
Yeah, you're pretty good. All right, Rebecca?
My name's Rebecca Brenneman. I'm having a hard time reconciling what I see with the enumerated goals. Goals: increased affordable housing, diversified neighborhoods, preservation of trees and natural environment, mitigation of climate change. What I see in my neighborhood: new housing priced at above-market rates, no housing built that is affordable for lower-income individuals and families where the need for housing is greatest, loss of existing affordable housing, housing built with small units suitable for single people and couples, but not for families or the elderly and disabled, lots that are deforested and denuded of all trees and greenery with all healthy, viable soil scraped off, destruction of natural environment, increased elements such as hardscaping that covers an entire lot that exacerbate climate change. What I see does not, in my opinion, match what you are trying to do, nor what I want to see have done. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Rebecca. Awesome, thank you, Rebecca. And just checking with staff, and I know we have people out, there's no more registered speakers. Awesome, that was our last one. With that, we have no more individual registered speakers for public hearing. I want to thank everyone for sticking around and coming out, and your commitment with being engaged in this comprehensive plan process and letting you, and letting us know what you want for the city to develop over the next 20 years and beyond. And I, a couple of thanks, thank yous, I want to thank our staff, all the volunteers, the IT people who are on the back end, also the security. I do see Councilmember Rivera, I see your hand is up. Councilmember Rivera, you are recognized.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I could have waited till you were done. I just, do you want me to go now?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Well, I really just wanted to thank you, Chair. I know it's been a long day. It was so important to hear from everyone. I want to thank everyone who came out. I know the chambers is clear now, but I was there in chambers this morning to hear in-person public comment and online this afternoon. I want to thank all our LAs who volunteered, and IT, and Arc City, amazing deputy city clerks who are so supportive of us when we have public hearings and public comment. But really, I wanted to thank you and your team for just doing such a great job today in supporting us through this process and supporting constituents, giving them the ability to weigh in on this important work that we're doing. And a special shout-out to all the kids that came out today. That just warms my heart. So thank you, Chair. Thank you for everything today.
Awesome, thank you, Councilmember Rivera. And thank you.